Thank you. So at 7:01, we're all here. So why don't we start the meeting? So Laura, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Targ.
Present.
Commissioner Haskell.
Here.
Commissioner Golden.
Here.
Vice Chair Cops.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Present. Okay, so let's get started. Welcome, everyone. Welcome commissioners, welcome public. We have seventeen attendees from the public right now. This is your opportunity, if you have any comments that aren't related to the agenda item for this evening, to speak up. So is there anybody who would like to address the question not on something that's on tonight's agenda? Got one hand up. Caroline, go ahead. Welcome.
That you got my letter, which was submitted before 12 o'clock and that you were able to share with all the committee listeners. Thank you.
Is that it? I guess so. Okay, good. Yeah, we got it. I read it. Thank you. Any other public comments not related to tonight's agenda? Okay, so with that, let's move on to the first agenda item, which is the continued review for the priory. Is there a staff report?
I'll have to recuse myself again on the priory.
Right, okay.
I'll be listening in the background if you need me for any of the minutes or things like that.
Okay, great. So we'll catch up with you then. Thanks, John.
I will go ahead and share my screen. Everyone can bear with me a moment. Can everyone see my screen? All right. Okay, thank you Chair Taylor and members of the commission and also members of the public in the audience. And so this item is a continuation of the December, the first consideration of the priory's CUP and master plan map amendments. And so this slide just recaps the requested CUP and master plan amendments that the priory is requesting. So I'll just pause here for a moment. All right, so in consideration of the requested amendments at the December, the first hearing, the commission discussed several topics that staff found centered around the following categories, which are in green. The CUP compliance, SEQA analysis and traffic analysis. And so what staff has done is we've organized this presentation around these three categories. Okay, so starting with the CUP compliance, the questions of average daily attendance versus maximum daily attendance and the percentage of Portola Valley students to the students' overall enrollment numbers were two questions raised at the December, the first hearing. The applicant has provided a response letter to these questions raised, which is attachment two of staff's report. And so staff will highlight some of the information in the letter. So a proposed average daily attendance of 394 students equates to a 421 maximum daily attendance. And this is based on an average daily attendance or ADA being 93.66% of total enrollment. Approximately 20% of students reside in Portola Valley. And 41% of students of the total campus population does arrive by alternate means to the school. And there's 15% that is from onsite housing. As a turning to SEQA analysis, the questions of student baseline population and appropriateness of a class 14 exemption for the project were two questions raised at the hearing. The applicant has also provided a detailed response letter to the SEQA analysis questions and concerns that were raised, which is attachment three of staff's report. And so in some, staff will just summarize the applicants and conclusions in that letter. One, that there is no environmental review required if the project is exempt from SEQA. Two, that town staff did properly determine the project was exempt from SEQA. Three, the town precedence does dictate application of class four exemptions. The example given was the 2016 CUP amendment for the stream building, which used the same class 14 exemption. Existing student capacity is the proper baseline for application of this exemption. And five, case law interprets original student capacity to be existing student capacity. And the applicant did provide case law for items four and five for the commission's review. And then lastly, which relates to the other jurisdictions using existing student capacity to apply the class 14 exemption. And so staff just wanted to note in looking at the numbers in a different approach. So in the determination if the project is exempt from SEQA, at the last meeting, we used the approach of maximums related to the 25% threshold. What we did is we used the actual request, which was a 44 student increase, 350 to 394. So that results in a 12 and a half percent increase, which is less than that 25% exemption threshold. So just looking at a different approach to kind of clarify staff's analysis and determination. And so for that final category, which was the traffic analysis, what staff will do now is turn it over to Paul Krupka with Krupka Consulting. Staff also wanted to note that the applicant did provide a supplemental traffic queuing analysis report today from Hexagon, which was forwarded to the commission. And so any questions or comments related to that, staff will defer to the applicant's team to address. And so with that, I will stop sharing my screen and bring Paul forward if he is here.
I am here.
All right.
Okay, may I go ahead? May I take share?
Are you sure? You have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome, Paul.
Oh, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Let me let me get my thing up here. There, you should see a nice big green screen. And again, my name is Paul Krupka. I am sole proprietor of Krupka Consulting. And I've done this analysis for or assessment for the town. And it's a pleasure to note also that I've been involved with the town for several years. And in fact, in 2018 and 2019 authored a study with town staff and community input called the pedestrian planning, pedestrian safety planning study that actually has some improvements slated for the vicinity of Woodside Priory. So anyway, right now, I just want to take some time and give you a quick overview of the traffic and parking assessment I did. Well, shoot, forward. Quick background. I determined based upon review of the CUP amendment and other past traffic analyses, parking analyses, that the amendment itself proposed relatively small activity changes. And therefore, I proposed and it was accepted that we do an assess that I do an assessment that really focuses on the relative change in existing traffic on local streets that the project might create or would create and the relative change in peak period parking demand onsite that the project would create. Looking at traffic, we estimated, I estimated traffic trip generation for a typical weekday. And this particular independent variable used, the best one that was found in the research was based on students. And that resulted in 109 daily, 36 a.m. peak hour and 26 p.m. peak hour vehicle trips. Those peak hour trips are peak school hour trips, so they would relate to the start and end times of Woodside Priory. That the, then I measured the traffic contribution to Portola Road by simply assigning half of those trips to the left, if you will, from the driveway and half to the right. So call it east-west in ordinal directions. And the net result is in a, from a daily standpoint, the 55 daily trips assigned to one leg of Portola Road would be approximately 1% increase over existing. And that's based on average daily traffic on Portola Road. The peak hour trip contributions were approximately 3% over existing for AM and 13, excuse me, 2% over PM. It's important to note that, and my finding based upon this is that these contributions of project traffic are not substantial, given they are within typical traffic variations. Typically, traffic varies on Portola Road and on Alpine Road and from 5 to 10% on a daily basis and that same variation occurs during the peak periods. Final, final point.
Just before, on that last slide.
Sure.
What was the difference between? If you can back up to it.
Yeah, I'm going to do that for you. Sorry, there you go.
What's the difference between the 36 a.m. peak hours and the 18?
Okay.
Peak hours for the traffic contribution? Is that just the split?
Yeah, what, what, basically, the the trip generation estimated that there would be 36, sorry, 109 daily trips. That's two-way. So trip ends, so daily trips in and out. And then during the peak hour, 36 total trips in and out in the AM peak period, peak hour and 26 total trips in and out. So if I want to measure the contribution of the traffic to Portola Road, I would want to estimate the contribution of traffic on one of the two legs of Portola Road. Based on existing traffic, traffic counts, the peak hour distribution is approximately equal to the west and east on Portola Road. So indeed, if you look at it, the, all these numbers are simply 50% of the above numbers. 55 is 50% of 109, 18, 13, and so forth. Do you see that? So just to complete the assessment, I looked at parking, again, using parking generation estimates based upon students. I estimated that the peak parking demand is 15 spaces for the project. And I believe my finding is that peak demand is not substantial because it would be accommodated by the proposed 53 space net increase in parking supply onsite. So the bottom line, traffic and parking impacts are not substantial. Parking and traffic impacts of the project are not substantial. And that concludes my presentation.
Are you going to speak to the letter that was presented or is the applicant can speak to that?
Which letter is that?
This is the one that analyzed the traffic, I'll call it backup on Portola Road and using Gambetti as an alternate.
Oh, the, if I may ask Dylan, that's the Hexagon study that you sent over this afternoon?
That's correct.
Okay, let me see. I got that right here. Okay. I did, I did review that this afternoon and I think my, my my feeling is that the, first, the analysis was done by a very reputable consultant whom I know well. The analysis looked at the inbound and outbound queuing, I'll call it, on this, at the driveways and, and assess the implication or the estimate, estimated queue length. Or actually measured the existing queue lengths and made some observations about it. In my view, the, the assessment was done using very customary approaches. And so it looks like it met the, met the need of the, of the objective of the study. And I believe, in my, in my opinion, I have not observed, or my, my experience, I have not observed the traffic onsite in any, on any specific way or detailed way since the school introduced the Gambetta Way alternate for car pools. So generally speaking, I, I, I read this, read the report. I agree. I think that the findings are reasonable based upon customary practice.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dylan, do you have more staff report?
I do. I have a little bit more. So I'll go ahead and share a screen again. All right, so turning to public comments, staff just wanted to note that no new notice was mailed. Given the continuance of the hearing from December, the first to tonight, we did not receive any comments to include in the packet. But we did receive comments that were received before today's noon deadline and we forwarded them to the commission for your consideration. We did also receive a comment after the deadline. Overall, the comments centered around traffic, parking and noise. Two comments, including that one late receipt, were in support of the project. And then just turning back to the SEQA review, so as staff noted previously, we're finding, we are concluding that the project is exempt under section 15314 of SEQA. Given that the section, the section does allow for no more than 25% increase in original student capacity. And so given that 350 to 394 increase approach that we detailed earlier, it's a 12 and a half percent increase, which is less than that 25% threshold prescribed in the, in that category exemption. And then just turning to some considerations. So these are the same considerations proposed at the last meeting with one additional consideration, which is that staff created report template that we provided. And then the second bullet is just modified to include staff is now integrated their proposed revisions along with the applicant's original proposed revisions into those conditions of approval, draft conditions of approval. And so just focusing on those draft conditions of approval and the overall revisions to that CUP language. Staff has distinguished our revisions from the applicant's revisions just with bold. So applicant revisions are just normal strikeouts and underline ours are bolded. And then staff just wanted to kind of briefly hit on the recommended changes that we've made to these three conditions just to align with the applicant's requests, but also some additional cleanup and housekeeping items that we identified in our previous staff report, particularly related to report frequency, that report template to kind of streamline and streamline and create efficiencies in data reporting and analysis. And then also addressing the concerns that were raised about the banking of future parking, adding a condition that are adding language that requires either the planning director or ASCC, depending on scope of work, that all of the new parking spaces have to go, have to be approved before they can be constructed. And then staff just wants to note that I have the conditions available for live editing if needed. And so staff is just recommending that if the planning commission decides to act tonight on the proposal that the planning commission move to adopt the draft resolution and those recommended conditions of approval. And then secondly, move to find the project categorically exempt from section 15314 of SEQA guidelines. And then staff just notes that the planning commission may make any changes or revisions to the conditions in order to make those code required CUP findings that were detailed in staff's last report of the December, the first. And so with that, this concludes staff's presentation and we're available, we're available and Paul is available for any follow-up questions related to the traffic. Thank you.
Great, thanks Dylan. So commissioners, any questions for staff?
Yeah, go ahead, Anne.
Yeah, um, I, we were meeting late last time. I think getting close to 11:30 and I brought up the issue about traffic on Portola Road that I'd seen one day recently. Though it may have been before any changes got made to allowing some cars to go down Gambetta. But it was a form of gridlock with cars on Portola waiting to turn in to the priory and backing up traffic so much that through cars could not go past. And then cars got blocked the other way. And then cars started going around the block, you know, the cars that were trying to turn right. And it just seemed very dangerous to me because there, these extra cars are moving through while cars are trying to come out of the priory. I really didn't like that in my mind. Yeah.
Is this a question? Because right now, we're just asking questions of staff. It's not discussion.
Can I also bring a question to the planning, I mean, to the parking and traffic people?
Yeah, absolutely. Please.
That's my question.
Yeah, good.
Um, the, in my mind, this problem that I saw is very nonlinear, right? It's the kind of thing that there's not a problem, not a problem, not a problem, and then it's a big problem and it's a big problem. This analysis that Paul gave us is the, you know, just adding general cars to the traffic, which I'm glad to see. But it doesn't address this problem of once cars start to back up, the, they, they really back up and they cause a big problem. I'm definitely concerned that it's, like I said, it's a nonlinear problem that with additional cars and if we increase the student population, the probability of that happening on a given day goes way up and gets much worse. What I thought I'd asked before, but I'd like to ask again, do you have a way to model that to? First of all, do people know the problem I'm talking about? I feel better if the people that run the priory and that do the parking knew what this problem is. And then do you have a way to model the extra cars and how? You know, maybe it only happens a little bit now, but will it happen, you know, half the days, once there's more cars trying to turn in?
Chair Taylor, may I go ahead and offer? Thank you, Commissioner Cupsill. The first, a little bit of background. I am, I am familiar with the traffic condition at, at the priory driveway on Portola. And, and I've spent time as a part of the pedestrian safety planning study that it started in late 2018 and was completed in 2019. Spent a good amount of time at the location observing traffic in and out AM and PM school peak periods. I did not, I did not see conditions that I consider as a professional traffic engineer to be the kind you're, you're describing. I, I'm, I'm thinking that you may have caught a, a condition that may have represented a, another event, maybe some overlapping, overlapping activities onsite. And that may create, as you pointed out, times when the demand, a surge in demand is somewhat higher than typical. But so that, that's my, the observation, the, the observations I made, and this was, you know, several hours of time on both, in both peak periods, I did not see. I saw queuing at times. I didn't see what more, more than maybe two or three cars queued. I did see in each, either direction, depending on the time of day on Portola. I did see substantial queues outbound in the afternoon, but those are kept on the site. Moreover, I saw personally many occasions of what I simply call poor behavior, driver behavior. And this, this is the thing that concerns me. And, and my focus at the time was on pedestrian safety. And indeed, that is my, my primary mission as a traffic engineer. It is on safety. So I, I saw that the, the there were, there were obvious conflicts between drivers, vehicles and pedestrians at this location. And it follows that there are conflicts between drivers passing through and drivers entering and leaving the, the school site. So there, the end result of that study was to recommend redesign of the crosswalk location to better suit the actual movements based on some additional study. So I think the, one of the keys here is, is to, we're, we're planning on proceeding with that, with the engineering and design and construction of this improvement. But it would be relocation of the crosswalk consideration of, of how much traffic is entering and leaving, so we understand where the predominant movements are. So a fact-based analysis is going to be, is going to be done. And that is going to be involved, the public and the Bicycle Pedestrian Traffic Safety Commission Committee. And probably will commence in the first couple of months of the year of next year. So, so rewind just a bit. My observations are that you do have issues where during typical traffic conditions, you have queues and you have, you have drivers behaving poorly. That's a, that's a, that, that's first and foremost creates potential collision, potentials for collisions. And that's why I recommended these improvements of including high visibility crosswalks, a rapid beacon assembly and you know, the relocation of the crosswalk. Now, step aside from that, I do have, so I, I'm demonstrating, I think, that I've got a lot of experience looking at this particular location and discussing it with the Tim Molak, the former head of school and town staff and the public. And so let me be clear about the assessment. The, a, a typical, a traffic assessment or a traffic analysis typically looks at typical conditions. That is the customary practice. The intent of my study was not to look for outliers or cases, as you described, where, where there might be a surge due to events. I did not, the, the, the assessment was merely a, as you can tell, a professional arithmetic exercise at professional arithmetic s- exercise at establishing the relative change in traffic. In the case where, so take those numbers, those eighteen AM peak, peak hour trips and thirteen PM peak hour trips and think about that for a second in a typical condition. Even if the, even if the traffic was condensed into a one single fifteen minute period. And generally speaking, with school traffic, you do see very, very abrupt periods or a, a peak within the peak. Even if that was the case, we'd still, I'd still be seeing, you know, one vehicle per minute approaching or leaving the school. And, and so in that, if, if you think about it that way, it's well, there's, there's not much traffic there. Now, if you say, well, what happens if we've got a condition where, you know, the total traffic entering and leaving the site is, is larger by some amount because of maybe a cover lacking, over lack of an event. Well, the contribution of the project in that case would actually be smaller. If you think about it, the prevailing traffic is, is greater. So the contr- the project contribution is smaller. So the, the assessment by design doesn't, by design and customary practice does not, it, it did not and does not address special events and other considerations which are important. So that's a long-winded answer. But I hope it gives you some thoughts about my, my own professional observations and, and opinion.
Patrick, did you have any comments to Anne? She was asking whether you've noticed this behavior?
Was that directed to me?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I, I, you know, obviously, Anne, part of the reason we, we went with, we, we, you know, started the Hexagon study was to, to try and, you know, find out more about that. And, and obviously, you know, we know there are going to be extraordinary moments when someone's trying to turn in or there's a viker passing or people are walking and they're going to cause challenges, you know, with, with parking and, and traffic. You know, one of the things that, that Hexagon study recommended, and certainly one that we think, you know, would be an option would be to use Gambetta Lane as our, as our, as our main drop off. Right now, we use the, the Priory School Road, you know, the first, the main exit, I guess, the main entrance, right? But using Gambetta Lane, I think that would, that would alleviate the queue just because the road is so long to where drop off is. And I could certainly show you back on that one slide that Mr. Krupka showed. But, but we, we know that, you know, there are going to be times when, when, when things will back up and, and that's with anything, right? I mean, there's the crosswalk up here at, up at Alpine and Portola. If you hit it the right time at three ten, you could be there for twelve minutes waiting for the kids to come down from Porta Madera and get into Robertson. And, and we love that. Same thing at Roberts, right? We know when the kids come down there, boy, I, you know, it's seven deep in the, in the line, you know, to try and get my, my good bread. So I can take it home. But I, I think, and we want to, we want to figure out the best option because we know we don't want our families queuing either, right? We don't want them waiting and, and that, that doesn't create a good environment either. So we, we certainly are open to, to those options using Gambetta Lane or a, a, as a good one. But, but we, we hear it and we hear it and we, we want to, we want to deal with it. Camus, did you want to add on to that?
Yeah. So just, just to sort of back up because it wasn't clear to me whether the commissioners saw the Hexagon report that the Priory commissioned. So we heard these concerns at the December first hearing. And in response to these concerns, we commissioned Hexagon to come out to the site last week. They came out and physically observed both the morning and drop off and pickup procedures on both Wednesday and Thursday. So they observed two consecutive days of both drop off and pickup and observed the queuing from Portola Road in both directions into the campus. And what they found is that all of the queuing was contained within the campus onsite circulation system. With the exception of Thursday afternoon, they observed a two car queue on Portola Road. And, and I think they said that the, the length of that queue was less than a minute. So Hexagon concluded that that queuing is fairly minimal, fairly insignificant. But they did have some suggestions that Patrick mentioned if, to eliminate that queuing on Portola Road altogether. And one of the suggestions was to expand the current use of Gambetta Lane to allow for parents that come early before three o'clock to use Gambetta Lane. Because what they observed is that some parents are coming about a half an hour early, which I think is, is not in compliance with the school drop pickup procedure. And for those parents that come early, if they were to use Gambetta Lane, in Hexagon's opinion, that would eliminate that extra queuing onto Portola Road. So, so that was the conclusion of, of their onsite study.
Great. Thank you. And can I clarify the Gambetta Lane has been instituted as a carpool drop off in the morning, but that's only recent. Is that right?
It's, it's That's right. It just began, I think, in the beginning of November. Is that right?
Yeah.
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 Mm-hmm. So just about a month, maybe six weeks.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And my, and I'll be the first to say, when I saw this bad event, I hardly ever drive Portola at that time. I just, I did drive it one day and I'm like, whoa, this is terrible. So I had no, I have no context to say whether it was just one bad day, which I realize there's little quirks and we can't fix everything. Or if it was a typical event. But I, it, it's likely it was before the Gambetta Lane carpool. Okay. I guess under this discussion, I'll still be worried that adding a few more cars, what if that tips it back?
Yeah.
And, and I think that's why the, the Hexagon provided those recommendations to, to reduce or eliminate the queue.
Great.
So
Oh, good.
Oh, go ahead.
I just one small question also for Paul. How did you come up with these numbers? It's an additional fifty students enrolled. Is that right? Why does that only make eighteen AM trips? Why don't almost all of them get dropped off?
Paul, you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair. Thank you for that question and to clarify the trip, trip generation. Trip generation is customary, customarily done using published industry standards, which are maintained and updated routinely by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. There's a document and vast database called Trip Generation. The, the analysis uses the published studies that aggregates published studies of land uses by kind. And, and in this case, a, a school, they have a numerous examples and study sites that published data and they aggregated that data and created both formulas and average rates. And those average, average rates for trip generation are based upon the school itself and incorporates all the different activities. And indeed, the, the database is based upon actual counts done at at all the sample, sample school, schools in this case, in the, in the database. So based on those, those published counts, analysis was done to create simple arithmetic averages of all the numerous studies that were incorporated. Or as I said, regression used to come up with the best, best fit of, of data, best, best fit data. And, and then, so that, so that the analysis isn't as simple as, as just saying, well, we've got an increase of, it's about forty-four students. I think it was forty-four students, yeah, forty-four students. Average daily attendance and and, and so it's, it's, it's not, not a simple matter of saying, okay, each student's going to arrive and depart one time or that's going to be eighty-eight students in a day. And then to simplify that further, and you've seen this in a comment from the neighbor across the street, simplify that further. You, one, one could say, well, gee, if they all arrive in this, if, if they arrive and depart at the same time, that's, that's eighty-eight, eighty-eight trips at the, for the day and all those eighty-eight occur in the, in the morning peak and all those in the eight, in the, in the afternoon peak, the same thing happens. That's the, the, the logic. It, but it doesn't, doesn't hold true to the actual, actual data that is used in the, in the procedure. So that, that my, my, in my opinion, the, the, and, and so the net result is you do have numbers that look a little different. Instead of eighty-eight daily, we're seeing a hundred and nine daily and thirty-six AM peak hour and twenty-six PM peak hour. That definitely indicates that of the, of the candidate study sites, that there wasn't, there wasn't that, that, there isn't a concentration of a, of all that traffic, all that daily traffic within only a couple hours during the day. The traffic is spread over the day. You know, do the, do the math, thirty-six plus twenty-six is, so what, sixty-two? So sixty-two of the hundred and nine, well, excuse me, just look at thirty-six or twenty-six. So twenty-five to thirty, thirty-five percent of the traffic occurs during the actual peak hour, whichever one you're looking at. So that's, that's how it's done.
Great. So can, can I summarize those AM and PM trips were based on averages across maybe many schools over California or maybe a huge area. I just want to make sure we are using our common sense about what number of car trips there might be. Some of those schools that were in the average might have been in San Francisco and many, many kids walked or took a bus. But then in Portola Valley, maybe the average isn't, is not a good number because many, many people drive. Could that be?
Well, well, you're, you're, you're pointing out something that is very, very important. It's an important piece of context. These, these studies, and I don't, I don't have the actual numerical fact, but the, the the IT, as we call it, Institute of Transportation Engineers collects data from across the world. But generally speaking, these trip generation studies are done in the, in the United States, in all areas of the United States. And so you do have a very mixed bag, if you will, of different, different use types and different school types and different conditions, as you pointed out. And so what, what you do see is, is those kinds of factors are, are not clearly identified. The, say, driver use, you know, mode share, mode share transit, how many, how many are bused? How many are, how many are driven by car? It basically is looking at, okay, all those sites, we take those and we pop, plot those on a big XY chart. And, and we start relating the number of trips in and out and to the size of the, size of the campus, in, in this case, students. And we can, we can draw averages, as you pointed out. We can also look at the, look at the pit curve and use the curve, use a equation to estimate the trips. Many times the equation comes out very similar to an average, but, but that's how it's done. And so those factors, those travel factors are, are considered, but not directly considered in for Woodside Priory in Portola Valley, California. So the, in, in this gets to the, 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 the intent, the purpose and intent of the study was simply to, to, to determine, you know, what, what would be the relative change in, in traffic levels? And it, it, it did not take those, take that project traffic and apply it to the traffic observed or counted for this particular study and, and measure any, any, let's call it level of service kind of change, intersection level of service change at this particular junction. That wasn't, that wasn't part of the study. And that was for a reason because, in my opinion, in my professional experience, the activity change on the site did not merit a, a, a consideration of, of intersections, multiple intersections as a traditional traffic impact study would do. Now, if, if Priory was vastly reconstructing at site or doing something of, of a more substantial physical nature that would literally change the, dramatically change the activity level on the site, then, then it would be reasonable to do a, a substantially more actual traffic analysis, traffic impact analysis. And it certainly wouldn't, you know, it, in that, and, and I just want to make that, make that clear. So I hope that helps, helps the context.
No, thank you. That's all my questions.
So finally, I would just like to add, you know, in the Priory's case, and it's stated in Patrick's letter, forty-one percent of students, teachers and staff either live on campus or arrive by alternative means of, of transit. So I, I don't even think those IT rates, you know, usually they assume a, a lower percentage. Priory is much higher. The other point I'd like to make is that as staff has determined this project to be exempt from CEQA under the existing schools exemption, you know, typically no environmental analysis is required. And the traffic study was done, you know, anyway, to, to, to get an idea of what the trips were. We provided the additional analysis on queuing and onsite observation to like really look at how drop off and pickup would be maneuvered. But I think it's important to note that, that Priory does provide onsite housing for both students and staff. And a significant portion of its students do arrive by alternative means. Thanks.
Thank you, Camus. Nicholas, do you have some questions?
I do. Ms. Paul, with respect to the Priory. Uh, you were observing that there was, that you observed bad behavior. And I was wondering, and in some cases, some dangerous conditions, so I'm hoping you can talk a little bit about what it was that you observed.
Uh, what? Thank you. Commissioner Tang, sorry, I'm sorry. The, the poor behavior that I saw was, was, was also illegal behavior. Where routinely, let's think about the, in the morning, in the morning, for instance, traffic stopped to turn left into Priory, traffic proceeding towards, towards Alpine, if you will. Traffic turning left to go into Priory would stop and queue. That, the, the, the poor behavior I saw routinely was vehicles passing on the shoulder in the dirt, if you will, to simply avoid this, this momentary delay. That is the kind, that's the kind of behavior I've, I've saw. The other things are, are like people simply turning, turning in or out without respecting the gap. The, the gap being the, the distance between an oncoming car. I saw many people executing, just hit the gas, wheels spinning to get out into the traffic stream, when indeed, a, a more reasonable approach would be simply wait for a better gap in traffic. So I, and I, and I saw the other thing that I saw, and I was focused on pedestrians. I, I saw a, a true lack of attention to pedestrians. And I did see indications of, of occasions where drivers would, what I call rush the pedestrians. If a pedestrian is, is, starts to cross the street, as soon as that, that driver sees Um, what I call rush the pedestrians, if a pedestrian is, is, starts to cross the street as soon as that, that driver sees. A window or a clear zone, he or she will just hit the gas and go. The, the, and that is, that's truly unsafe and illegal to, to call it so-called rush pedestrians. Um. Driving, driving, um. The ba- ba- bad behavior, the final thing I want to point out is routinely vehicles will stop right in the crosswalk. Right on the crosswalk and, and that is simply, uh, uh. Full, full disregard of the pedestrians that are, are, uh, maybe attempting to cross. So those are the ki- kinds of things that I observed.
Interesting. Uh, are those, uh, so you had mentioned that you, that those words are dangerous conditions. Are those dangerous conditions that you're talking about?
Uh, I would, yeah, I, I may have used the word dangerous, but, but indeed, the, the, the. The conditions I saw that concerned me were those, um, they, they create. Um. Unnecessary, uh, or they can create conditions that aren't really apparent to other drivers, you know. Uh. If people passing on the right, for instance, or passing in general, uh. Um. A line of queued cars on a, on a one, one lane roadway or two lane roadway. Um, and that, that is unsafe behavior. Uh, so that's what I'm trying to say. There is un, there is unsafe behavior. And uh, is it a, is it a, um, is it a danger or a risk? Uh, in my opinion, it, it, it has all the, uh, all the, uh. Uh, ingredients of, uh, a potential collision.
Yeah, that sounds, uh, and, and this is a result of, uh, of the current conditions. Uh, and so current number of people using the road during this, during this peak moments that, uh. Uh, Commissioner Hoppsell was talking about just at the, in the mornings and presumably at the, at the end of the school day as well.
Yeah.
So is that the reason why, uh, there was a recommendation for. Uh, modifications at the crosswalk location and the turning and. And, and, and the, and the other mitigations you were talking about?
Yeah, the. I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm going to, um, just look at some notes here, but the, but generally speaking, the. Intersection, uh, you, the, excuse me, the, um. Location in the pri- Priory School Zone at the Brookside Crosswalk, um. Uh, near Cortomadera intersection, all these, all these streets are within the, within the, the zone, if you will. But so generally speaking, the, the main thing that I saw, which was of concern, is that. Um, there is not much advanced notice of the, of the crosswalk. That exists now and the attendant, uh, indeed, and it also the attendant traffic flow. In and out of Priory and in and out of, um, Cortomadera, Brookside. Local residences, Georgia Lane, all those things are happening in, in, in one relatively small area. Um, the school driveway is literally in the middle of two reversing street curves. So there's not a, there, it's very, very appropriate, in my opinion, that a school zone was, was created by the town. Um, and so you see the school sign about five hundred feet in advance in each direction, the school speed limit sign. And that's the, that's the point where a driver can actually see that there is a crosswalk coming up. Now, the, the other factor was that, so there's, there's a lack of advanced notice primarily. And then there's, there, there are observed conflicts between pedestrians and drivers that. Create a need, and that's the need I, I've described, that the need is to enhance the visibility of the crosswalk. Uh, enhance the, enhance the existence of the crosswalk by high visibility signing, and in this case, because of the, uh. Because of the special nature, um, I recommended a, uh, what's called a rec- rectangular rapid beacon system. That pedestrians push the button and the bright lights, uh, illuminate, uh, and I. Add further enhancement to driver visibility. So that's why I did that.
And so the way to mitigate at least partially the, uh. Uh. Uh, the. The lack of notice is to put up, uh, more visible brighter signs and also to put on. Uh, flashing lights.
Right, right. This is, this is, uh, um. Uh, these, these, this, these in concept and in practice, um, have, have shown great benefit. A very solid benefit in terms of simple driver awareness, and that's the kind of thing we have now.
So can I, can I, can I pause this for a second? I feel like we're getting a little bit away from the CUP. Um, I think it's legitimate to understand what the risks are, but the mitigation and the crosswalk and stuff. Doesn't really feel like this is a CUP issue. Um, are you okay with moving on?
Nicholas? The reason why it's not is twofold. One is we have a cumulative impact. And two, it goes to the applicability of the categorical exemption. The categorical exemption is applicable. It's not a straight baseline kind of question. Now, Camus, you'll go and correct me if I've got this wrong, but a baseline condition typically. Talks about what the, uh, present experience is. So for example, and I assume the cases that you cited. Are the illegal activity of airports or blasting at a quarry. And that's the baseline, regardless of whether or not it's legal or not. It's a little different when you're dealing with a categorical exemption, which uses different language in. Uh. Uh, to talk about the original condition as a.
It is a little bit different. So first. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought you were asking me.
And it also creates a difference. Uh, in whether you have an unusual condition. And if you have all the ingredients for a collision. And if already, and if you, the appropriate steps to address the condition that exists. And the compliance issues that exist are to put flashing lights and more signage in the middle. Of the Sina Corridor. I think that there's a question of. What is innate, what is the nature of, of the analysis? And what is it that we should actually be taking into consideration? We'll need to find, for example, issues of compatibility with the, uh, surrounding environment. And, you know, I think that there's an open question here. If you look back in two thousand and four. The, um, the observation was that the Priory was looking to increase. Its size to three hundred and fifty people from two hundred and forty. And there was a recognition that there'd been a lack of compliance at that point. And now we're in a position where we're going to, to change the definition of how many people. Are permitted under the CUP. And we're also in a position of adding additional people, uh, potentially beyond that. And we're in a position where the planning commission had asked staff to. Uh, you know unanimously to bring, uh, to bring, uh, the condition into compliance. Consistent with the obligations under the CUP enforcement provisions. So I think for all of these reasons, it's important to understand what the existing condition is. And whether we want to address the existing condition and bring it into conformance. Before we go and further expand where we are at this point.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep this.
I understand.
Questions versus discussion.
But that's. But, but that's the, that's where, you know, I think that there may be an underlying compliance question here. And if our traffic expert says that all the ingredients for a collision are in place. I don't know, you know, that, then, then, there's a, there's a relevant. Question as to the posture of, uh, of where we are, at least in my mind. But, you know, I'm wel- I'm willing to, I'm willing to, to move on. I think that the, I just articulated. Uh, my concern and.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, I just want to keep this in the domain of questions. I, I mean, I, I understand what you're, where, where you're driving. So I think getting that information on the table was useful. Um, Paul, i- if it can be brief, again. We're just in the question, we're not in the discussion section yet, so I just want to be careful that we don't sort of lose track of, you know. Which, which piece of the meeting we're in.
I, I just, I want, point of clarification, Chair, I, I appreciate that. Um, Commissioner Target, using the, using the. Phrase, uh, there are, all the ingredients for a collision are there. I believe is an inappropriate use of my words. Um, I was talking about the observations and study. I did related to pedestrian safety. I am very concerned or remain concerned about pedestrian safety at this location. I, I do not believe that the project, uh, has an impact on. Uh, traffic on Portola Road, um, a measurable impact. So I, I just want to clarify that.
Sure, and I appreciate it, the, uh, what you were talking about was the, uh, potential for impact for conflict between. Uh, cars and people, uh, not, not flow, uh, generally. And I agree. That a lot of what you're talking about is of bad behavior that may be extra legal, uh, based on. Uh, you know, inconvenience to people early in the morning, a lot like what, uh. Uh, uh, Commissioner Katsel and others have observed in terms of, uh, in terms of queuing. So I appreciate that.
Uh, other questions, Nicholas?
Uh, not, um, there are comments that came in regarding noise. And, uh, and what the existing condition is and experiences with noise and, uh. Just wondering, uh, if staff had given any further thought to what noise impacts there might be from. Uh, additional students.
And can I follow up? I'd also be interested in what the noise conditions are in the current CUP, if staff knows.
Um, first, I would say generally that there is a chance there's been some increase in noise in the recent times due to pandemic. Um, so the Priory had asked, um, the town for permission and moved a couple of its events outdoors. Um, for safety reasons, so staff was, um, aware of that and supported those changes, um, for that, for that reason. So there could have been an increase in noise related to those events. Um, in terms of the increase in the student population, um, we didn't, you know, look at that too specifically. Um, given the fact that we were moving forward with the CEQA exemption, found that to be exempt and that this increase in the student population is, is still small. Um, compared to the overall site, the distances to the property lines, um, and the activities that they're increasing being relatively. Um, quiet activities, there's no change to any of their events, um, or any of the louder activities that take place on the campus.
Any other final questions, Nicholas?
No, only to note that the issue also goes to questions of compatibility.
Sure.
To the findings that need to be made, now which of course would be informed by a sequel analysis as well.
Sure. Judith, do you have some questions?
Yeah, just a couple. They're pretty straightforward. Um, one is on red page fifteen. This goes to the red line that staff prepared. Um, point number five has a lot of language taken out around landscaping and ASCC review. Just wanted to understand what that edit was really getting at. Um, is it no longer needed or? Um, I don't know if that's Laura that needs to comment on that.
Yeah, this was a, a red line that was proposed by the applicant team, um, that staff did think it was, um. Acceptable or reasonable for the planning commission's consideration. In that the way that the campus has been developed, a lot of the major development has now taken place. And so the future development that would happen there would likely be related to any additional, um, housing units. That they may propose that are still within that cap, but a lot of the buildout has happened now and it's successfully gone through an ASCC process and. Construction. So we thought that some of that was no longer warranted, so we agreed with the applicant.
There's a reference to a master plan and point number five, is there no longer a master plan?
Um, for landscaping master plan, um, no. We're not, it's some of the records handed are hard for us to identify, um, for this project, what was approved when. And one of our objectives with the CUP amendment was to clean up some of those things. So that we would just know moving forward that there would not be an expectation for the landscaping master plan.
Okay, um. The page, red page nineteen, this is in the same red line, has fifteen parking spaces with thirty eight. Additional. Uh, we could talk about this if it's not a question, but I'm still a little confused as to why thirty eight. Um, it, it's asking for an additional twelve percent and it would be available in their discretion. Presumably subject, if I read this right, to, um, the director or ASCC's. Input and if they, for example, chose to do all of this in one year, a twelve percent increase. Seems to me quite significant. Why? Why is this, um, not something that would trigger our review or at least one of the planning commissioners' review?
Um, it could, if that was your preference. Um, the intent behind it was a couple of different pieces. It was first to. Um, address the fifteen spaces, um, that the parking analysis said were needed today. It was also to address kind of flexibility and changing needs, um, of the Priory over time. It was to address some, um, casual observations made by staff in ASCC while we were on the site over multiple different occasions. And our ongoing interest in keeping driveways and fire lanes open. So that higher number, um, is certainly, you know, up to the planning commission's discretion. If you don't feel comfortable with that. Um, being within either staff or ASCC's approval, then certainly, um, you could make a reduction there.
Yeah, I guess my question is more on why thirty eight? Why not thirty five? Why not thirty, like, is there anything driving that number?
Um, I'm not aware of what was driving that particular number. We kind of talked about an order of magnitude with the applicant. And maybe the applicant team could elaborate on that particular number.
Yeah, that's my last question. If they want to comment, that's fine. Otherwise, I'll hand it back to Craig.
You want me to comment on that or?
Yeah, go, go ahead. I mean, we, we can comment on it now, we're after your presentation, but go ahead.
We, we were just trying to, you know, obviously, we, we, uh, we want to accommodate the parking needs on our campus. And, uh, we were trying to find, you know, a reasonable number of parking spots, you know, that could still fit within our campus. So. Um, not something we want to build necessarily. Um, obviously, if there's need, we want to accommodate that need, but. That's certainly not something we want to, we want to build, but I think Carter could probably expand on that a little bit more.
Yeah, go ahead, Carter.
Uh, thank you, Craig. Uh, the, the issue is, prin- principle we are, are making sure that we've got. You know, future opportunities, because there's future floor area, you know, that still remains unbuilt, you know, within the master plan. And effectively, we want to make sure that we have parking available for that additional floor area. You know, that is in the master plan that is yet to be built. Uh, and effectively, that thirty eight spaces, you know, has been set aside for that. Um, these fifteen spaces, you know, are for, you know, the, uh, you know, what the traffic, you know, consultant is recommending. You know, to deal additional forty four students.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Judith?
That's it.
Great, thank you. Uh, so I got a couple of quick questions. Uh, I think these are mostly addressed to staff, um. So, when you calculate ADA, as I understand it, um, remote students don't count. So like during COVID, presumably the ADA numbers are sort of gone through the floor. Is that a reasonable way to look at ADA?
Yes.
It's only, it's only on camp, it's only people who actually arrive on campus.
Yes.
Okay, um, and then, is there a max enrollment? I understand that we're putting a max on the ADA, but is there actually a, a maximum number of students that Priory could enroll?
There's not a maximum, the way we have it. There's not a maximum, the way we have it drafted right now for your consideration. So it would be going, the maximum would be clarifying that it's an average daily attendance maximum. There would not be a total enrollment maximum.
Right, unless we chose to apply one.
Correct.
Right, okay. Then there are a couple of places where things were left to planning director discretion. And there was one where basically people with, within the radius, the notification radius of the site, we're going to be notified. I guess what I was trying to figure out is, how does the public get to comment on these? Because normally we have a, you know, we have a planning commission meeting and that's the public's opportunity to comment. If something goes to the planning director and the, and the, and you decide, I mean, not you, but whoever the planning director is decides, oh, this isn't an issue. If, if a resident or a member of the public thinks it is, I mean, how would that ever get to a public discussion?
Are we talking about a CUP compliance issue?
No, there, there were several of these, I think adding parking, I mean, I have to go back and look at the document because I'm looking at you guys right now, but I'll pull it up in a minute. But there were a number of places, I mean, not, you know, not a huge number, but a couple of places where the planning director had discretion to make some decisions. And it seemed to me that that allowed behavior that sort of didn't really allow public comment. And I was just wondering, is there a mechanism built into this that I'm just not seeing? Or as we get into discussion, is that something that we should think about clarifying?
The only one that I'm aware of that we changed to add planning director discretion was with the parking spaces. So if the planning commission approved the total number of parking spaces, then the physical installation of them would be approved, approved by the planning director or the ASCC, depending on the scope. So if it was a space or two, you know, at a time, then maybe the planning director would approve it. Then the planning director would have the authority to send it up to ASCC and get public review if, you know, for a large number of spaces constructed at once.
If there were
That's the only place I'm aware of that we changed. All of the rest of the language is from the past CUP.
Okay. I'm always, I mean, do we have to a planning director discretion for a lot of these things? Because I don't think it needs to come to a full commission hearing. But on the flip side is I'm leery that sometimes we allow things to have discretion, that then effectively we mute public comment. So I think that's what I'm being sensitive to. So at least in this parking thing, maybe we, when we get into the discussion, we can address that. Then the last one was the 350, is that 350 ADA or is that 350 enrollment? Because I know that at some point it was enrollment and then we are switched into ADA. So is the 350 the, the max enrollment or is that the, the eight, the current ADA?
Well, it wasn't totally clear. My understanding when I got here is that the previous staff had been interpreting that as ADA and the planning commission had been interpreting that as ADA. So that has been my understanding, but the planning commission expressed, you know, with two meetings a couple of years ago that that should be clarified. So that was one of the purposes of the CUP amendment is to clarify that.
Okay. And I guess all I'm asking is, is the 350 an ADA interpretation or is it just some number that came from somewhere that we're not really sure anymore? Well, it seems like it makes a difference potentially in the percentages, right? Because if it's max enrollment, then ADA is typically, um, what's the right way to think about this? Is typically lower than max enrollment.
Correct. So ADA is, is less than maximum enrollment.
Right.
The previous CUP language used the word enrollment, but was interpreted, as far as we can understand, by staff and by the planning commission as ADA. So we, we think ADA was used in the past.
Okay, so I wasn't looking for compliance so much as, there's a number here which is 350. Is that an ADA number? Is that the number of students in two years ago? The average attendance two years ago or is that actually the enrollment two years ago? I mean, I'm actually a much simpler question than the, the vagaries of, of how we interpreted the, the language in the past. Just literally like, where's that 350 coming from? And Patrick, you were shaking your head, maybe you know the answer. I mean, is 350 an ADA number?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Then that's, that's all I need to know for that one. So, okay.
If I may, so I was just reading a, an Almanac article saying that in 2004, and Carter, you may have awareness of this, that there was a desire on the part of Priory to change its enrollment number from what, 240 to 350? And that they recognized that there was a compliance issue at that point in time. I don't know what was said in 2004 to make that change. But there was a change, it appears, in 2004 from, I'll have to go back and, a little bit hobbled with my computer at the moment. Back from 240 to 350 in what looks like a 2004 timeframe to increase the enrollment by a little bit more than 100 people. Carter, you, you, you was around then.
I, I've been around for a while.
You have been, you have been.
Been around this place for a while. I don't remember exactly what was, you know, what, what went into it. There were a lot, the, there were a lot of changes. Huge master plan update. You know, that went for years to, to get our arms around the additional floor area, the housing issues, performing arts, you know, all of the different buildings and things, you know, that were, were planned. You know, they spent an enormous amount of time on drainage analysis. Because of some of the drainage issues that had been problematic, you know, in the past before 2004. The, the number itself, I think was arrived at by kind of putting a stake in the ground and saying about 350 is about right. I think there was, you know, some sense of, of, you know, what the composition of each class needed to be in order to make, you know, the school, you know, function better. There was, you know, there was a lot that went into it. But I don't know, you know, Nicholas, the specifics. From a number standpoint, you know, Craig, whether it's, you know, whether the 350 was total enrollment or if it was ADA, it, I know it wasn't defined. I mean, if, if you take the current, you know, 93%, you know, that the school was currently, you know, experiencing, you know, as the difference between enrollment and ADA, 350 means 325. And if you, you know, took the, you know, the difference between 325 and the 390, 394 that the Priory is asking for, you know, that's a 21%, you know, increase. You know, so I, 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 I'm not sure, you know, you know, getting into the weeds of this, you know, is as germane as, you know, it is. I think it's time that the, the CUP process matures, you know, to accurately reflect, you know, what the impact of the school is. And the impact of the school has more to do with the average daily attendance than it does enrollment. You know, and, you know, Craig's comment about what happened during COVID is, is absolutely germane, you know, as an, as a review of the impact. The school, you know, during that year, a year and a half, had very, very, very little impact on the town because there weren't any students, but the enrollment was still, you know, enrolled in the school. So I think getting the arms around, you know, you know, average daily attendance, I think is the most appropriate way. And I think the previous planning staff, you know, had, you know, and, and town planners, you know, had judged that as being an accurate representation of the impact of the school. So I, I
So just to be clear for
The historical question because
So if we're looking at a proposed average of 394, we're actually looking at an enrollment cap functionally at 421.
Yes. And, and if you took, you know, if you said the enrollment cap was 350, you know, and you put a 25% factor on that, that would take you to 433. Yeah, just to be under 25%. So in, in, in any way you calculate, you know, the, the, the change from the 350 to what they're asking for, you know, whether it's enrollment, you know, or, you know, average daily attendance. You know, in all cases, you know, the Priory is, is well within, you know, the 25% increase, you know, in students.
Any other questions before we move on to the applicant presentation?
Hey, is this, is this Commissioner Taylor, is this for me now?
I think it is. I was just giving the commission just a minute to see if they had anything, but no, no.
I'm so excited. I'm so fired up. We get our time now. So
Yeah, yeah, no, you do. So we have, so please, the applicant presentation, we're ready for you.
Okay. Okay, I'm just going to try and just share my screen here for a minute here. Thanks so much. Oh, that's not the one we need. Thanks so much. We're grateful for the time here. Obviously, you know, we're, we're so thrilled to be part of, of Portola Valley. And just excited to be here before you. Grateful for all the work, you know, that you've done. Great for all the work that Laura and Dylan have done as well. It's just been a, a good partnership with us. I just want to clarify a couple of things, you know, recognizing that at the last meeting, I think there were some elements that were presented that, that, that hopefully we can address and clarify. And I appreciate you reviewing that letter, you know, that I sent last week. Here you can see the last, you know, 10 years or so of, of, of some counts of what we have, right? So you look at our enrollment account, our average daily attendance, right? And then the percentage, right? So that's the, the average daily attendance, it's the percentage of enrollment. So you look historically, we've been between 94 and 95%. And these are all the, the forms that we've submitted to the town, you know, going back, you know, to, to the early part, you know, June, you know, June, 2012. And you can see, you know, we've been under that, you know, 350. And then obviously we, we were over the 350, you know, starting in 2016. And, and we worked to mitigate that. We ended up accepting less students in 17, 18, 18, 19 years of the application admission cycle. Yet we still had a good yield. And so, you know, we were, we were above that, that yield as well, above that number as well. Tim Molak had some great conversations with town staff. And, and I know it was brought up in a, in a September 2019 meeting. And, and two months later, three months later, we, we put our formal application in to amend our, our CUP. You know, we, we, we know that we've been submitting these numbers to the town, you know, for, you know, 10 plus years. And, and the, the presentation has always been, these are our numbers and, and looking at the average daily attendance as kind of as our, as our key number. You know, we, we, we look to go to that 394 and, and it's, it's been pointed out, that's about a 12 and a half percent. You know, increase. And if we look at that number in, in, if you look at that number in terms of enrollment, you know, Commissioner Targ had it right, you know, 421. So, and even if you went conservative down to 92%, you know, that would still put us at 428 again, well below, you know, that, that 25% increase. So, but again, we think this number, this, this number that we're looking for, the 394 average daily attendance, you know, that's, that's right for Priory. We know our facilities. You know, we know the kind of school that we want to be. We know the kind of teaching that we want to do. And it really is predicated on relationships and that's knowing and really loving and supporting our students. And, and if we grow too big, that's not who we are and that's not who we want to be. So, so we know this is the, you know, this is the right number. I think the 394 gives us some room. You know, and allows us to, to not trying to, you know, time our, our, our admissions letters or figure out who's going to say yes and who's going to say no. If we have a good yield or a non-good yield, you know, we want to have a little bit of room so that we're not the handful of students that we've been over. You know, which again, we've, we've worked to kind of correct. I think one of the other big questions that, you know, has come up is this, is the average daily attendance. And just trying to really understand that and just to try and spell it out in the simplest terms. You know, we're, we're looking at our total number of students, right? And then we look at the absent number of students and we subtract them and then we get the, the students in attendance. And then we add that number up, you know, each, each day. We take that total and we divide by the total number of, of school days and, and then that becomes our, our average daily attendance. And again, you know, you saw that last slide, it's been between, you know, 94, 95% of our total number of enrolled. And even if we went down further and, and got that down to 92 or 93%, again, still, I think that would be within the, in the, the, the bounds of what we, what we would want in terms of our, our schools as well. So, but again, we're not looking to grow and be big. We love our size and, and we love, you know, how we are. You know, we, we, we do want to be attentive to the pickup and drop off and, and, and that's an important part because that's what starts our day. And we know when students come in and families come in and they have a good experience dropping off, they're much in better mental state. So, so we're really attentive to that as well. You know, we have about 41% of our students or faculty and staff altogether who, who get here beyond a single-use vehicle. And we're proud of that and, and we think that's going to continue to grow. You know, in the last couple of years, our numbers from Portola Valley have inched up. And again, we're proud of that too. We want to make sure that, that people know this is not just a good school, but this is, is a, is a, is the best option, you know, for them here in, in Portola Valley, that it's, that it's really their school too. We know we just finished the six new houses, so we anticipate that on-campus housing or onsite housing to grow to 17% just with the new people that were, that were able to, to house. So we think that number is going to continue to tick up. And we will do everything we can to really encourage, you know, our families to make sure that they are using alternative transportation. You know, we made the switch to, to go to Gambetta Lane for, for, kind of in November for ride share and car pools of three or more. And we do think it's paying off. You know, there's other measures, as I think we talked about, you know, we could use Gambetta Lane always. We can make the middle school use Gambetta Lane and the upper school, you know, use, you know, the other main entrance, you know, for our drop off. So I think there's some mitigation measures, you know, that are, that are certainly on the table that, that we want to work on and, and we want to be proactive with. Because these are all things that are really kind of important to us, you know, too. You know, I think just kind of getting to that last slide about the, 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 the kind of the drop off and pickup. You know, you can see the Gambetta Lane kind of right here. This is what we've used, you know, for that, you know, for that, for that carpool and ride share. And then this is the, you know, again, this is the, the lane where people come in and they do a little turnaround here and drop off here. So you can either drop off up here, you can drop off down here. And then these people get in the queue and then we, and then we, you know, get them on out. So again, it's important to us, you know, we have people monitoring this area up here, trying to encourage, you know, the speed. Obviously, when there are weather conditions or, you know, unique circumstances and, you know, someone's, you know, we've got, you know, you know, the, the seventh grade bringing in their, their bridges that they just built, right? To see, you know, how many, how many, you know, pounds a popsicle stick bridge can hold. And they've got this big thing that they're carrying. We know that's going to, you know, slow things down too. So we try and, we try and be sensitive to that, but we know those things are going to happen and those things are, are part about, a part of being a school. You know, the last question that came up, I think that's just important to note, is, is, is Portola Valley. And, and we're proud that, that just over 20% of our students come from Portola Valley. And that's important for us and good for us because community is really important for us. We love being part of this community. But we also love when our, our students are involved in the community. About 65% of our students will, will get on stage or they will support stage through tech, lighting, design of the sets or costuming. And those students stay after school to help with those productions. About 70% of our students are going to wear uniforms and participate in athletics. And we're proud that our students are involved beyond the classroom. You know, we, we certainly want students that are academically ready. We want students that are involved outside of their studies and that are open and supportive of our, of our Benedictine and Catholic values. And when you live close to the school, we know those things are going to happen because people are going to be more invested and more engaged. So we, we, we want to encourage, you know, more of our families that come from Portola Valley. And that's a, that's certainly a priority for us. Obviously, we want them to be the right fit for us and be, you know, ready to, you know, thrive in our campus. But, but that's going to be important for us and we're going to continue to do outreach to develop more and more relationships with the, with the people from the town. um, to develop more and more relationships with the with the people from the town. You know, we're just grateful again for your attention, your time. I know this is a lot. Uh, you know, we've reviewed the draft conditions that the town staff has has put forth, and we're certainly supportive of the of the recommended changes that they have, and 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 we, you know, obviously respectfully request that that you pass, you know, the resolution um tonight, so we're we're again, we're excited to work with you and and uh and we're we're looking forward to some good outcomes.
Thank you, Patrick. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, is this the right time? Patrick, did you see um one or two of the letters from residents about noise? Um, they they came in late, I think, um, so I saw him as a separate email um from Dylan. I just wondered if you knew anything about these events, um, and are they gonna keep happening?
Yeah, and I would be I would be nervous if I didn't know anything about them. That wouldn't be good, let me tell you. So, uh, yeah, no, we got those this afternoon, and and we're grateful for them, and and and, um, yeah, it's two, it's two separate events, right? One, I I it was, it was, um, you know, we have not had anything on campus for about two years. So I know one, one, one letter referenced the tremendous increase in noise the last two years. I I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's quite accurate, only because I've been here for two years, and sometimes I'm the only one here, right? So, um, and I'm just not that loud, but um, but we did, we hosted our prom on campus. Um, uh, and and that was outdoors in Schilling Square, uh, that went till about ten P M., and then we did, and that was last spring. Um, and then in October, October twenty-second, we did host our homecoming dance on campus, and that was seven-thirty to nine-thirty. Um, and uh, uh, there was a reference to a light show, and it wasn't really a light show, it was, you know, the the dance, uh, you know, where we have the dance floor, you know, we had lights, you know, that changed colors, right? So it would be blue, and then it would be green and red, and um, so it wasn't really a light show, it was just more to to light up the area, and that was in Schilling Square. Um, and that went till about nine-thirty, um, maybe nine-thirty-five, uh, and and we we worked to communicate with with town staff prior to that. Um, and and they certainly gave us the the green light to that. We do not anticipate those happening to continue to happen. Um, that was COVID and pandemic-related, um, but normally our prom is off-campus, um, and normally our dances are are indoors. Um, even the October one, um, it was chilly, um, and, you know, we didn't have one of those fun fall warm nights, but uh still, kids had a great time, and and I know that's what everybody wants, you know, especially in that year and a half, two years of of really, um, you know, separation and distance, boy, to be able to come together and and have some fun a- at a dance, and uh and the importance of of that kind of of education, you know, critical, too. So we want to encourage that, obviously, we're trying to make the make the best of it, but that was uh, that that, so those were two isolated events, um, that have happened. Other than that, there there have been no other events on our campus the last two years. And I would say, too, just to the, you know, our our friends who are who are listening, please, never hesitate to contact me. I'm happy to deal with that or work with that. We did put something out in the Portola Valley Forum before that, we put something down on Nextdoor, just alerting people of those of the of the October twenty-second one at least, and um, you know, we're happy to entertain all comments and 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 work with people, because we know this is your neighborhood, too, and we have people that live here, too. So we're all in this, the same thing together.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Other questions for the applicant? So I have one question. Um, would you entertain um running some kind of mailing list that people could get on, that you could basically publish if you're gonna have events like this? Because I think that's the easiest way, you know, if you can let your neighbors know, and it just can be, you know, some kind of mailing list that they just sign up for, and then you just put it out there, you don't have to maintain who's on it, you just need to, if something's coming up, because, you know, the problem with the forum and stuff is, you know, that covers a fair number of people in the valley, but, you know, there are people, myself included, that it's just, it's overwhelming to read the forum. So, you know, I think anything you can do to keep people in the loop, especially if it's really exceptional and not sort of general behavior, then that seems like it goes a long way.
Yeah, we 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 certainly, that'd be a great to to do some sort of an email, you know, blast that we could send out, people could subscribe to it, um, just so they're aware of. And we do, and we, you know, we obviously submit our events to the town, that's part of our CUP, so we have an open house, right? Um, you know, we have graduation, we have back-to-school nights, um, you know, we have these, um, you know, these these moments that we we obviously submit to the town in advance, and we can easily just reminder, open house is coming, or even, you know, football game on Friday afternoon, right? So, um, Craig, I don't, I think that'd be a a great idea. We you'll you'll be the first guy, we'll put you on, you can be the first one on the list, we can you on it first.
I mean, we did that with the Neely Winery project, and I I think it's, you know, helpful for the neighbors, so, okay, cool.
Yeah, sure.
I don't have any other questions, um.
I guess I've got one following.
Go ahead, Nicholas, yeah.
And that is, with respect to the Neely Winery, there were a variety of proposed uh mitigations around noise, and I believe that there was some recommendations to adopt them with respect to the uh priory. And I was wondering, in addition to the other uh in addition to the uh uh the notice, whether the priory had considered the other nearly uh noise um conditions uh that were good within the CUP.
I I'm sorry, Mr. Targ, are you asking, I I I'm sorry, I'm just not familiar with the noise ordinance that were applied to the Neely projects?
One of the letters included, so called out the specific uh noise issues, uh noise uh conditions of approval that were included within the CUP. And it it sounds like you you may not have had an opportunity uh to uh to review the, but they're monitoring kinds of things, and.
Right, I no, I just, I I would wanna, I mean, whatever our town noise ordinances, we would want to follow those, certainly. Um, and I I mean, I don't know, like, if we have a football game on on Friday afternoon, and it's five-thirty, and it's, you know, coming down to the last play, and there's an eruption, because, you know, we score and win, I wouldn't want us to be um somehow, like, our kids cheering be a noise ordinance, because someone feels like it's too loud, or or I don't, so I just don't know what those noise ordinances are, so. Um, but I mean, we would certainly be happy to look at the town noise ordinances and make sure that we're following following those, but.
Let me assure you, you're violating the uh uh the noise ordinance when there's a touchdown, and I don't think you're hearing anybody complain about that. Okay, well, just 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 to be clear what we're talking about, yeah, more touchdowns, better, to to be clear. But we are talking about a going from what has been perceived by a lot of people, including, I believe, the priory, certainly at one point as a cap of three fifty to uh a cap, a functional cap of uh four twenty-one. So we're talking about seventy-ish more kids. Uh, and that's a, that's a real, that's a real change. And it's a change, for example, in terms of traffic, and we should also talk about what kind of mitigation measures the priory might be able to commit to at this point in time, uh, as well as to what kind of noisy impacts uh uh there might be, there might be experienced on campus.
Yeah, the only the only thing I would say is, Mr. Targ, I don't I don't actually think that's completely accurate, in the sense that, you know, we've been submitting our numbers, at least for the past, you know, since two thousand twelve, and, you know, we've been, you know, three seventy, three eighty, three eighty-six, right? And then our our ADA has been, you know, three fifty-three, three fifty-four, three fifty-six, three forty-seven, right? So we've been hovering around that three forty-five to three fifty-five area, and our numbers have been, you know, three seventy-five to three eighty-five, three eighty-six, so. Talking about, you know, going from, if you want to use that, three fifty to three ninety-four, which is forty-four, or you could look at three, you know, eighty-six, three eighty-five to four twenty, right? So, you know, you're looking at thirty-five students, so. Um, so I I think that's that, I think if we're gonna compare it there, that's important just to just to note, and I think the town historically has looked at it as ADA at three fifty, um, and we're looking at an ADA of of three ninety-four, so. Um, so I think we're looking at, you know, those numbers, um. You know, as far as the, I I don't think things are gonna change for us, like, we're not doing different activities, right? We're not gonna add, um, you know, new new events or experiences, you know, I I think this is, again, a chance for us to come into compliance. Um, you know, something that I think we've been working on for the past couple of years. Um, we think this is, uh, you know, given the, you know, the 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 fantastic work that that Tim did to to really update our campus and 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 beautify it and really maximize it, I think we have the facilities to support, you know, this growth. Um, and and I think we don't have to, you know, really functionally change, you know, our faculty and staff. Um, again, I think it just gives us some room so that we're not, you know, breathing up against this and and feeling guilty about being three fifty-three or three fifty-two or three fifty-four. Um, you know, it just gives us a more a more functional space, so, so I think that's just an important note, um, going forward.
Uh, and so the question was whether you would be willing to take into consideration the noise issues as well as the traffic as a condition of moving uh forward with this uh uh with the CUP, whether one makes the determination whether it may be required as a matter of sequin, I can see council getting agitated, or whether one would see it as a matter of making the necessary findings for the CUP.
Yeah, I I again, I just, we haven't, we've, we, those those notes, those comments were the first ones we've heard about noise. Um, you know, and again, I think we we articulated that it was a, it was a COVID-related, these are COVID-related events, and and they're they're extraordinary in the sense that we're in a pandemic, um, and we were looking to accommodate and give our students an opportunity to, you know, do a very normal, um, you know, high school or middle school experience, which is the dance, so. Um, I I don't think, and if there are noise issues, obviously, we want to, i- if we were gonna say it, you know, whatever our numbers are, we would want to address our noise issue, so. Um, we we will work, if there's issues to noise, we wanna, we wanna deal with it, and then same thing for traffic. I mean, obviously, we've we've proposed or 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 willing to look at using, uh, you know, Gambetta Lane as a as a drop-off and 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 as a way on and off our campus, or probably on would be better, um, looking to stagger, you know, our our times. Um, uh, uh, in terms of, okay, we can drop off here, drop off, you know, middle school can drop off here, upper school can drop off there. Um, so we 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 want to continue to work with uh Corder Madera and Ormondale as well, um, you know, to try and um, make sure that we're in sync and and not all doing the same things at once. Um, we want to do all those things, and and those are, those are things that we want to do, because because we're priory, not because we're looking for a CUP. Um, we we want to do those things, because that's who we, that's who we are, that's who we've been, you know, for sixty-five years, and that's who we want to continue to be.
Great, thank you, Patrick. All right, so unless there's any other burning questions for the applicant, I'd like to open it up for public comment. All right, so with that, there's currently thirty-three um members of the public. Um, Dale, you're up. Dale.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much, uh. For uh taking my comment, I just had a a couple of comments. This has been a fairly lengthy conversation for what I consider to be fairly simple items, a couple of things that I want to point out. I mean, you're you're talking about the priory in a queue at their traffic point. You know, at at Corder Madera up here, the queue when people are leaving that place goes all the way from Indian Crossing down to Portola Road, with kids crossing the lanes and people picking up at inappropriate spots. I know they've done their best to control that, but that's a huge queue, and you can't have any control over that. Similarly, you spent a tremendous amount of time talking about traffic coming in and out of the Neely Winery. That's gonna add to the traffic going right in front of the priory, and you haven't, you know, considered that in the impact there either, so I'm sorry that that you're, I think you're attacking priory for maybe eighteen cars when you have other bigger issues in town. And the other issue is on this noise, and I I'm sorry, Commissioner Targ, but I think it's silly to ask the priory to consider any kind of noise ordinance. This is a school, you can't do anything to Corder Madera, you can't do anything to Ormondale. It also appears you can't do much to uh to Zots either, um, but they've been there before the town existed. And it is a school, anybody living within any radius of priory knows it's a school, and you expect to have occasional noise. So those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Danny, Danny Eustre, you're up next.
Welcome, Danny. Yeah, this is actually Bill Eustre, I'm using, I guess Danny's login.
Welcome, Bill.
I think I might get him in trouble then. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to.
Studying right now, just so everyone's clear, Danny should be studying for exams right now.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to to um voice my support for the project as a neighbor and as a uh parent and a longtime resident here in Portola Valley. We've we've gone through uh Ormondale and Corder Madera, we did windmill school, we did the um, uh, bunch of different experiences, living the life of a citizen moving in and around town. Um, I work from home, my my whole life is right here in Portola Valley and has been uh for over twenty years, and so, um, and and yet, I'm still driving Danny uh into school every morning and and see the um a- as I did when he was at Ormondale and Corder Madera and the related traffic there. I mean, the reality is, uh, um, sometimes traffic backs up, it's gotten better since uh prior implemented some mitigation, I don't know, three, four, or five weeks ago, I forget when that when that occurred. Um, I think uh they'll probably get better. Uh, I also think it's uh occasional, it's situational. Um, and and it's to be expected if you have schools. We have Windy Hill, which is a jewel of this community, and that gets a parking lot that backs up. We have the Town Center, which is spectacular, we have farmers' markets, we have soccer games, baseball games, and and we get some contention on the roads for those things, too, and uh those are the things we do for the gifts we have with these different jewels in the community, and so I I, it does feel like there's some, um, uh, you know, I don't know, to me personally, uh, some kind of aggressive uh tone here, and uh as a citizen, it's kind of a bummer, particularly knowing the priory as I do as a long-term wonderful um member of the community, even well before we actually benefited by having our kids go there. Um, so I I think a lot of the, I think the sound stuff can be mitigated. We had a son who graduated last year, and we had the end-of-year graduation ceremonies impacted by COVID, and so a lot of it was outside, and it was amplified. And I could see that that could uh disturb others, but in the prior years before before this pandemic descended upon us, we had lots of, you know, it was all indoors, and so uh probably very, very little disruption, and so. Um, you know, a- again, I think folks are raising good concerns, neighbors have good concerns, but I think they're all very, very manageable, and I I think the trier, the priory is a deeply trusted neighbor to address this stuff, uh, you know, fully as a as a, um, you know, true neighbor and part of the of Portola Valley community. So in that sense, I I I fully support them, and I urge you guys to do so as well, and and where there are areas to explore, we do it kind of in a very um cordial, trusting way, rather than kind of a hostile prove-it-to-me kind of way. Anyhow, I'll wrap up with that. Thank you again, also for all your uh work, to all the volunteers and the community.
Thank you, Bill. Phone number seven-five-six-two, I assume this is Caroline, you're up next.
Thank you so much, yes, it's me.
Welcome.
I will keep it, I will keep it brief, um, you got my letter, um, yeah, um, I'm not going to be pleased that there's um several issues with the traffic, and we as residents have been, over the years, and I'm talking more than, almost more than ten years ago, uh, started um addressing these issues, and it's sad that they have not been mitigated yet. Um, and now, again, we're going to a bigger enrollment, um. I um run there every day, and I see the accidents do ha- be happening, so all I can say is I can uh and I'm even willing to volunteer to help you with the solutions, which we have done for several years. Um, I uh have some questions, and for instance, when we talk about twenty percent uh of the students are um in Portola Valley, um, can we make sure that the borders are not included, because secondly, they live on campus and others in Portola Valley? Um, when um the traffic consultant was saying uh that his analysis is based on one hundred and one daily trips and one hundred and nine, and it's only students. Well, what about all these professionals who work um and come in uh for some kind of service at the priory, um, and then all the trucks, the Amazon trucks, the FedEx trucks, they all come at the same time, and it's one big chaos? I hope you will um enforce some mitigation, and and for instance, I mean, this is a compromise. We don't like the school, but it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger, so it's Corder Madera, so it's um, every project that the 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 town has. taken is getting bigger and bigger and and, but all the problems that we have mentioned before they started building have not been solved. And that, that is basically the problem. So if you can see if, if it is a one way in and one way out, but I definitely hope that the neighbors, I'm not affected by the noise, but the neighbors can talk because that's a huge impact. I will let the others talk. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Caroline. Virginia, Virginia Huffman, you're up next. Welcome, Virginia.
Hi, thank you for listening to my comments. And I just want to start by saying I am not a traffic consultant, but I have done my own personal research on traffic at the schools locally, especially Corder Madera School and Woodside Priory. As a parent, I have driven my kids for one hundred and eighty days a year for five years at Corder Madera and also at Woodside Priory. And I have not had any problems at Priory in terms of traffic. It might be very minimal. I have not seen any accidents. I have not felt worried or concerned for myself. I think I've been cautious that I don't hit someone who's waiting to cross the street. It doesn't seem chaotic to me at all. As a matter of fact, when I've gone to Corder Madera, it was quite crazy. The lines were long. There's kids crossing the street in various ways. I think, I think when the kids are crossing from school going to Roberts, we're on the right side of the road, whereas Corder Madera, you know, I think it's a little bit more distressing and driving. You don't want to hit a little kid running across the street. And I think when we're looking at the research that happened, it's really, we're only talking about one percent more traffic. That is so minimal. And to have this conversation all night about something that's very minimal is kind of just, you know, sad to me because the school does far more impact positively than it, that would be negative on the community. I think if we're waiting in line for a few minutes, I think that's okay. I think that, you know, I know Priory as a community, we could talk to our community about this and say, hey, we need to be more mindful. I think that we would be, but I think it seems pretty good right now. So I just think, I think that you guys should really consider passing this. I think it's a very minimal impact of any at all. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Virginia. Janie, Janie Ward, you're up next.
Hello, I am in full support of this project. I live on Gambetta Lane at the Priory. So I see how this new traffic pattern has really benefited the school and alleviated a lot of congestion. The teachers who live on campus especially are helpful in, in directing traffic and, you know, adding that to their responsibilities. So it's been nice to see, you know, that working. I will say as a parent who raised my kids preschool through high school here in town, I do have greater concerns about the traffic. I'm, you know, almost killed someone at the Triangle Park the other day that came jogging out and there are bushes in the way. I think we should look at the larger traffic patterns of kids getting out of school in general. And I feel like, you know, we're one road in, one road out in town. It's the same thing for our schools. So it is an issue. I mean, we're in a rural area. It's something we have to contend with. But I hope that you all support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. Kristi, Kristi Corley, you're up next.
Hello, commissioners, and thank you for your volunteerism. I am concerned about the thirty-eight extra parking places before an application has been submitted. I'm just wondering if a resident could ask for parking before they submit their application for building. I don't think it would be passed, so I question that. And then how many trees would be removed for the thirty-eight and how many trees would be removed for the fifteen? What would we lose to give this away? I can see a few pass this that they will need parking, so the fifteen, but I do question the thirty-eight extra parking prior to seeing an application. I care about the safety of the kids walking to Corder, Corder Madera from that area and crossing the road. So I'm willing, right outside my house, I'm going to get a blinking light too. So prior to putting in a blinking light, could you as a solution put an official cross guard there to make sure that the students going to another school can get through that area AM and PM and the parents feel safe, allowing their kids to bike or walk to school because that's real important. I never like to see anybody in a dangerous situation. And I think, I think we have to remember that VMT means vehicle miles traveled. It actually equals emissions. And we'll see in the future with many other traffic reports that emissions is very important to the future of planned Bay Area and to keep emissions cumulatively reduced in an area. So I think we're going to have to look at VMT emissions real closely. And I think that's all my comments. You know, I'm all for education and safety, health and safety, risk and hazards. We have to, we have to look at real seriously. And I want the kids to feel safe. I, I was on my way to Windy Hill and I got in a backup on the way to Windy Hill thinking, oh, I already left late. So I actually was later. So I did run into it on my way to hike and it wasn't too bad that morning. I am curious how many cars go up Gambita Way since it just started in November. So out of all the vehicles that arrive in the morning, how many are you seeing going up Gambita Way? And if we were to look at last week, what was your attendance last week on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? Might be of interest to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Jose, you're up next.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And thank you for the time with the commissioners. I just want to preface my comments in that I believe the Priory is of value to the community. And I'm really pleased to see that the Priory is confident enough to seek growth because that translates that there's interest in premium education in the area. And so that's great. Traffic is an issue from my perspective. I've seen it backed up. And so my comments are really to make the Priory more ease seamlessly integrate into the community. So it's not a, to throw mud at the proposal, but rather to work in concert to make it a better integrated Priory into the community. The traffic numbers that Mr. Kruptha presented, I think are misleading in that if he positions the thirty-eight trips in the morning as one percent of traffic, that would translate to say that there's thirty-eight hundred vehicles going through that area during that one-hour time span when parents are and and kids are driving to school. If it's three percent, that's twelve hundred and sixty-six vehicles. Again, neither numbers make sense. So to me, that's kind of a fallacy of taking a theory and try to apply it to a specific situation. The other point that came up during the discussion today was regarding the crosswalk. And I know, Craig, you didn't want to talk about this, but I think it's, it's important because it's all tangled up in the whole traffic. In fact, Mr. Kruptha talked about the fact that it was a, there was bad behavior and unsafe crossing due to the crosswalk and the pedestrians. The proposal that came up during his presentation to the town council back in two thousand and nineteen was to, and this was proposal done by some citizens, including myself, was to move the sidewalk out of that area. Move, remove that exposure to, to the people crossing the sidewalks and move it east of Corder Madera so that it's not in the middle, in the thick of all the traffic intersections that are coming together between Brookside and Corder Madera and Portola Road and the Priory exit and Georgia Lane. If you move it out to the east, it makes it for a better traffic. And I, and I'm really, really happy with, and it kind of substantiate my feeling that the Priory is a valuable member of the community in that they took the initiative to do this hexagon study. In that ultimately, a moving traffic one way through the Priory will improve traffic flow in and out of the Priory and probably will make the parents and the drivers happier because they won't have the people backing up and to trying to get into the Priory to drop off the kids or the kids coming to school on that. So again, the comments are really to work with the Priory, not to shoot the Priory. I think the Priory is a valuable asset to the community. That's it for me. And thank you.
Thank you. And, and I just wanted to add, I was only trying to move this out of the question phase to the discussion phase. So it was not that I was opposed to discussing the crosswalk. I just didn't want to do it while we're in the middle of just asking clarifying questions. So number five, four, five, ending in five, four, five, four, you're up next. You're still on mute. There you go.
Hi, hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Emma Morton Boris. Thanks so much for giving me a chance to talk. Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. So I live in Portola Valley. I actually grew up here and went to Ormondale and my parents live in town and now I work in town as a doctor. So I'm very invested in the community. And I have three sons all at the Priory, a junior, a freshman and a sixth grader. I am not going to focus on the traffic issue. I wanted to tell you the reason that I chose to send my kids to the Priory, which really comes down to the values of the school. As a doctor, I take care of a lot of teenagers. And in the Bay Area, we live in a very fast-paced world. I'm sure you all know with a focus on results and achievement and competition. And in addition to all the normal social hierarchies and stress that goes on in middle schoolers and high schoolers' lives, this can be a very stressful time for kids. The Priory is really different. They place extreme values on kindness and community. They have mantras such as all are welcome and listen with the ear of your heart. And these are just, not just mottos, but I can think of countless examples where I see these values lived out in the lives of the students and faculty. And if you want to hear these stories, message me privately and I can go on and on and on. But I guess basically in a time when the world can be very divided and polarized, I am grateful to the values that the Priory promotes. We can disagree with someone, but we can have a thoughtful, meaningful and balanced discussion and continue to have mutual respect for each other. I also want to say that the Priory has been responsive to the greater needs of Portola Valley. The school shares the facilities with the public, including the track, field, the Performing Arts Center. Just last week, I saw the school Sustainability Club pulling weeds and clearing blackberry bushes from the trail that runs along Portola Road. The Priory students last year went to local businesses like grocery stores, restaurants, gas stations and helped frontline workers sign up for COVID vaccines. Especially those who have, sorry, especially those who have had language barriers. Basically, if you can give more children the opportunity to learn values like they do to the Priory, I really believe the world would be a better place. And so I'm very in support of this proposal and please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam, Sam Schillus, you're next.
Thank you.
Welcome, Sam.
Thank you. I, so I live across the road. I'm one of the letter writers. I just wanted to comment, like I've lived here for twenty-three years. It's, it's kind of striking to me that almost all the comments so far that in favor are people who have either are employees of the Priory or have, have students there or have had students in the past. And, and I, I haven't heard anybody in favor who's been a close neighbor around here. I, I walk my kids to school, you know, for twenty years through that area, that intersection that's being discussed. It's noticeably worse now. It's gotten worse over the years. I walk my dog through there now. I've been nearly hit any number of times by people going through this intersection. It's very complicated. Gambetta Lane is a driveway. It's not really a road. It's one lane. I, I've noticed that new traffic that they've been running through there and as we walk on that path, that's complicated. It's on a curve that's pretty blind. It's a pretty tight curve. So I don't know what that's going to look like with a lot more traffic. But I do want to comment on the, on the noise stuff. I, I know that, I know some of the noise that's happened recently has been because of COVID. That's fine and that's reasonable. But I think the Priory has been getting more noisy more than the last couple of years. Like it's been pretty noisy for the last five or so. And I think the, the thing that we were specifically asking for, which kind of got glossed over was with the McNeely property, there's, there are monitoring requirements on the CUP. And so we were just asking that that be considered here. It seems not unreasonable. This is much bigger business. If we were concerned about noise and noise mitigation with McNeely Winery, it seems pretty reasonable that we'd be concerned here as well, given that there's a history of, of pretty a lot of events. And so that's the thing that we're, we're talking about. I was a little bit surprised that, that Mr. Ruff wasn't really that aware of the ordinance, the noise ordinance when he was asked that question. That seems pretty telling. And so I think, you know, if, if the Priory is not comfortable with the same kind of restrictions and monitoring, that McNeely just was asked to accept by the town, the question I have is why not? You know, why, why would you have trouble with that if you're not actually intending to be allowed? My experience with Priory is that they, they kind of continually step over the line. This three seventy-two baseline, I believe, comes from, you know, an additional fifty students or something that were discovered on campus a couple of years ago, if I recall the story correctly. And then that kind of got your grandfather back in. So I, I would like, you know, several other people have made comments about prior mitigations that have not really been followed through on. I don't have any problem with the Priory adding students in a way that's responsible to the people who do actually live next to it. But I think it's time to get some guarantees and given that the town just had a similar case where they made some pretty firm additions to the other CP, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for the same thing here. So that's my, includes my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sam. I would say, I didn't hear Patrick say that they weren't going to comply with the noise ordinance. I don't think he was completely aware of what the requirements were that were placed on the Neelys. So, but, but as we get into the discussion, we'll certainly talk about noise more. Lisa, you're next. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi, thank you. And thank you all for your work on this. I am here to voice my support for the Priory. I have, I'm a neighbor, a pretty close neighbor right over on Grove Drive. I have one child who's been there for three years. And this is his third year. And I have another one over at CMS. So my one that's at Priory, he's able to walk most of the time, most of the time home. I can't say he's a very early riser, so he doesn't always make it for walking in the morning. So we have in the past hit some of the traffic that's been talked about on Portola, which was reduced quite drastically when Priory made those changes recently. We noticed that reduction almost immediately. I will say along traffic, as we're talking about Corder Madera, there are a number of times I am backed up Alpine down to Portola trying to do a pickup. I have seen also a lot of near accidents for people trying to pull into Portola Valley Ranch as people are coming in and out of Corder Madera and not and turning without seeing that traffic coming in and out. So there's, there are issues there and I think that's something that drivers, you know, in general, just need to be more thoughtful and careful of. As far as noise, I live just down through the trees from Ormondale. I can hear the students at Ormondale. I can hear them on recess. We can hear a lot of the noise from Ormondale. I hope as a community that we don't ever get tired of hearing our children being children and doing what they need to do as part of school and growing up and enjoying the football games, the baseball games, the dances, whatever needs to happen, a movie night out on the field. All of these connections are so important. And I just want to say that I, I hope as a town, we, we don't want to silence our schools and not hear our kids. Anyways, I'm here for support for Priory and thank you all. Anyways, I'm here for support for Priory and thank you all for everything you're doing and looking at this.
Thank you, Lisa. Cindy, you're up next. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. This is my second meeting that I've listened to around the Priory, so I'm, I appreciate your time around this issue. And um, I'll first address the noise. We live on Possum Lane and um have have sent our children to Portola Valley Schools since preschool and um have really benefited from Ormondale, Cortomadera, and now with Side Priory. And I think you're hearing from so much from families that live here and send their kids to the school because we so much enjoy our kids having the ability to walk to school. Um, I have a quick trip home. I think um the emissions issue, I think that's a big issue too to address. So having a short um commute to the school and having a school that's very involved in the town is just um tremendous for my family. And I think for the town too. Um, we've worked with the Sequoias, like Emma said, with the um pulling weeds. I think the Priory Garden, there's just so much um back and forth with Priory in the town. I just um. Anyway, I I think that's why you're hearing from so many um families that are involved in both or live here. And I also want to talk about the mental health of the students and how Priory left their track open during COVID, not just for its own students, but there were students from all other schools coming to train on our track because the other schools had closed their track. So um, the whole mental health issue that Priory prioritizes is for all children. It's not just for their own. And I I so appreciate that. Um, and the the point about the dances, um, I don't know of any community that turned down outside dances last year during COVID. Um, it was the first time that I think a prom was held in two years at Priory. And just the joy and the music and the celebrate, we could hear it from Possum Lane, like, and I walked outside and I was so excited to hear that. And and I know other towns did too. I know MA got to have theirs outside on the football field. Like, it just meant so much to these students. And I would agree that um, I hope that the um complaints about the noise also, um, I just hope they're aware of the mental health that's happening with our students and all children um at certain ages. So celebrating and hearing laughter is is, I think, why we live in Portola Valley too, so so our children can be outside. Um, and then the safety concerns, and I so appreciate your focus on safety and traffic. And um, having young children, I know Portola Valley deals with um traffic in different areas and crosswalks. And I I appreciate knowing that someone's on the council kind of focusing on that. Um, I've been living kind of this traffic study with three kids that go to Priory. I have um, I have noticed, I was surprised, actually called Priory because I was so surprised at what a big difference a small change made making um, having the larger car pulls and um go through Gambetta Lane. So it's not necessarily that many more cars going through Gambetta, but the loading and unloading, I think, takes longer. And having them go a different direction saves so much time. Um, my daughter likes to get up five minutes before school and I've noticed.
Cindy, can I ask you to wrap it up?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So anyway, she has not been late since they changed this uh traffic issue, so I really appreciate um the change. And then um, and then I I think that's it. I'm in full support of this and I appreciate um your time and um, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Karen, you're up next. Welcome, Karen.
Hello, commissioners, and thank you for your work on behalf of our town. I want to voice my support of the project for Priory as a Portola Valley and Priory neighbor. Our kids went to the Or- to Ormondale and Cortomadera and then had the privilege of attending the Priory. And we've always been very impressed with the Priory and values they teach the kids, focusing on a high expectation for integrity, respect, consideration, and more. Uh, they're great neighbors, responsible and considerate. And I think the town is really fortunate that Priory is in Portola Valley. The school's always been respectful, responsive, and kind, and operated in concert with the town. And there's no reason to expect anything different from the Priory in the future. They've also provided an open door to the community, providing the neighborly hospitality and reaching out to the community around them. They're a valuable asset for the community, welcoming our town residents to their functions like the art shows, the plays, the Christmas fair, sporting events, and they share their facilities like the track. And and though my children graduated years ago, I still attend many of the public events and appreciate the opportunities that they provide. The Priory is also has a great relationship with the town vendors like Roberts Market. Uh, the Roberts cashier is often compliment the Priory students as having high integrity, being respectful, considerate, and just exceptional in their behavior. I'm hoping you all can pass the project quickly and give Priory the go-ahead to continue doing great things in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. Katha, I think I'm saying that right. Katha Ambler, you're up next.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
All right, thank you. My name's Ketha Ambler. You had it, you had it close. No worries. Um, thank you, all of you, for your time and your service to our community. It's um really important work you're doing and and takes a lot of time and attention to details. Um, uh, so I am an employee of the Priory and I've been here since my twentieth year. I've also lived on campus for most of that time. And I just want to speak about Priory as a, um, I've seen, you know, I've heard the noise, the limited noise that we have, and I've seen some traffic over the years. Um, it it's minimal. I I don't see those as big, big issues that that we need to spend too much more time on. But what I would like to talk about is how Priory has become one of the main gathering places for our community. So we have, we have a few, right? We have sort of Town Center. We have uh the school, the other schools in the area. We have some churches where people spend time. Um, but we, and Wendy Hill, right, is another place people go. But we don't have a lot of really open spaces where families can come and just be um on the weekend, for instance. And I see the Priory, it wasn't just during COVID that we shared the track. Uh, our key, our our campus is fairly open to the public. And so because I live here on campus, I see the families come on the weekend and play soccer behind my house. There's baseball games going on behind my house. Uh, these are, these are groups that aren't Priory-related, but you can see the joy and sort of the excitement of having a place to be outside safely on campus. Um, and it's a, it's a very open and welcoming place, um, I think, for the whole town of of Portola Valley. And that's what we want to be, right? We want to be a place where uh our community can gather and and support each other in that way. Um, and really, that's the, that's the main thing I want to say. Um, I've, I felt so lucky to be a part of the community um, as a resident and as an employee. I've, I've worked on the school board uh for Portola Valley School Districts as a, as for many years a while back. And I believe that the work that we do together is really, really important. Um, and I really value your time. And also just, um, you know, want to say, of course, I I'm supporting a sort of moving forward with this um plan. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Katha. Paul. Paul Tudell?
Yeah, hi, thank you. You know, I've heard a lot of people, um, hi, Ann. Our our sons were buddies a long time ago. Um, a lot of people have thanked you, and I, I have to thank you also. I mean, you're spending a lot of time helping our town, and we appreciate it. I've lived at Priory since nineteen eighty-three uh down by by the gym. Six of our children graduated from the high school, four of them from the middle school. They all walked, except one. When Steve was a second semester senior, he insisted on driving the family car up so that his friends could see him drive on campus, but that's a separate issue. I've, I've resonated a lot with what many people said, uh, Dr. and Emma Morton Boers. Uh, we, we really do try to focus on our value-centered education and get students involved in community service work in the community uh, near and far. There were some good ideas brought up tonight. Like, I I love the idea about the crossing guard. You know, perhaps we could even explore a staggering somewhat, the start of uh class times in the morning or the dismissal times to even lessen even further the the traffic. But I um hardly uh hope that you will pass this suggestion. A lot of thought and effort have gone into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Pillar, you're up next.
Hello. Thank you.
You're breaking up or disappeared on us. You still there? So Pillar, we're not hearing you. Seems like we've lost your connection. All right, so I'm, I'm going to move on. Sorry, Pillar. You can send in written comments or I guess you could try to log back into Zoom. Um, but we're, I'm about to close the public comment. All right, so is there any other public comment before we move on?
If I may, I would just like to make a request, Commissioner Taylor.
Um, can I finish with the public comment before you inject?
Sure, or I can speak as a member of the public either way.
I mean, normally, so let me close the the public comment, and then I can bring it back to the commission, and then I'd be happy to entertain your comment. So um with that, I'm going to officially close the the public comment and bring it back to the commission. And then with that, Kamis, if you have something you would like to say to the commission, go ahead.
Okay, um, well, first I'd just like to make, well, to thank you for all of your time and consideration tonight on the Priory. I I did notice at the beginning of Dylan's staff report, uh, the mo- the order of the motions. And I would just like to make a request that the motions be reversed and that the commissioners first make a determination on the CEQA clearance um, and determine that the project is exempt from CEQA and then take action on the, on the project. I don't know if the town attorney is here tonight. But that would be my, my request.
Okay, thank you.
Is that CEQA be determined first. It's all in the same resolution, so if we were taking two separate actions, then the CEQA would be first. I just saw it called out and I got a little concerned there. Um, you know, what I also like to address the comment that Commissioner Tard made. You know, regarding the safety issues being a possible unusual circumstance that might disqualify the project from the use of the exemption. Um, you know, I I under, in my review of CEQA case law, this would not be an unusual circumstance, even if it would be typically operational, safety issues are not a CEQA issue. It's, it's outside the realm of CEQA. Similar to parking, is is not considered to be a CEQA issue. Um, so so I don't think that that would disqualify it or exempt the project from use of the existing school's exemption. Um, you know, with regard to the the noise complaints um or the mitigation measures, because the project is exempt, it's not subject to mitigation measures under CEQA. Of course, the commission um has the ability to modify or add conditions in order to make their CUP findings. Um, and as we've discussed in our presentation, the Priory is willing to voluntarily expand the use of Gambetta Lane. Um, the the noise condition was brought up. I did take a look at the Neely noise condition. Um, you know, this is for a new use in the town, the Neely Winery. The condition requires monitoring um of the nighttime events for the first two years of the um of the project and reporting. And um, I would just like to point out, you know, that the Priory has been in operation since before the town was incorporated in nineteen fifty-seven. It typically doesn't have nighttime events other than the couple of dances that were discussed that were because of COVID. Um, you know, I think that the Priory can address whether it's willing to um consider or agree to such a self-monitoring condition of noise. Um, but as legal counsel, I really don't see that it would be warranted.
Okay, thank you, Kamis. So then, Patrick, this is usually where I give the applicant a chance to respond to any of the public comments that you want to respond to. Um, so if, and you don't have to, but but this, if there's any of the public comments that you wanted to respond to, you're welcome to before the, we do the discussion within the commission.
Yeah, you know, thanks. Just, you know, I, we look at this as a partnership um that that we're excited to work, you know, with the town as we've done for sixty-five years. Um, we are grateful to be part of it. We feel like uh the town has very much influenced Priory, and and we believe that the Priory has also had a real positive impact on on the town. And again, we, we, we are excited about the opportunity. Um, and we are, we just, we look forward to, you know, positive relationships going forward too.
Great, thank you. Okay, so with that, um, let's bring it back to the commission for discussion. Um, who would like to go first? Ann?
Sure, I'm fine going first. You know, I'm, I'm really unclear on something, though. If this is exempt from CEQA, then we do not address traffic and noise? What, I have the logic. I'm unclear on the logic.
No, I think we, within the CUP, we can address it. It's just, it's, it's not necessarily a CEQA.
I see. Okay, but we can still talk about traffic and noise.
Yeah, in in through the chair, in relationship to the findings, is how you would want to think about that. So specific to the CUP findings, whether those findings could be met or not.
I see.
So that's where that would would be most appropriate.
I see. And then you all, I'm um torn about how to address this, for me mostly the traffic. Um, as, well, my fellow commissioners know, but maybe not everybody else, that these uh CUPs go with the land, not the applicant. So just to be um on the Planning Commission, I like to think through what would happen to this if it, the property got bought by someone else. I think that's really unlikely here, but still, it's a good exercise, right? Like, uh, if we couldn't trust the goodwill of the current owner, then uh would we wish we had other rules in place and should we put those rules? Um, so that's one thing in my mind. Then the other is, though, I, I mean, I do trust the current applicants and they want to do the right thing on traffic and noise. Is there something we could put that would be um, you know, not too onerous and not too legalistic, but get what we want, which for me is that traffic, can I call it, rarely backs up on Portola Road. I totally get that, you know, there's going to be a few days a year, and for me, if that's like four or six, I'm going to live with it. You know, if it's the day that people, everybody brings in their bridge project. Um, but if it's, you know, once a week, there's a backup, I'm not going to like it. Um, and oh, and then I don't care what the mitigation is, if it's Gambetta Lane, more, more traffic that way, or um staggered school times. Um, you know, I don't care what the solution is. Is there something we could do that would would be some lightweight monitoring thing, um, just to make sure it hasn't gotten to be a problem? You know, and I'm fine if it's, you know, even a student goes out some number of days a year and counts the cars as the backup. That's just my thought. But that's going to be my only issue, I think. Or I wish I could come up with a solution that is not too onerous for the Priory, but does put a little pressure to not uh, you know, if the world changes and traffic starts backing up, I, I want that to be the Priory's problem to figure out how to fix.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Nicholas, you want to go next?
Sure. Well, I'll start by saying this isn't a referendum on the Priory. It's not a question of whether we love the Priory or we don't love the Priory. For those who may have questions, we love the Priory. But the question is, how do we love the Priory in a way that one is compliant? How do we love the Priory in a way that avoids all the ingredients for a collision involving pedestrians? And I think that that's really what we are wrestling with. Part of it is a now permit that sounds like since at least two thousand and four, maybe before, lacks clarity. Lacks clarity as what's actually required. This is an appropriate time to really be thinking about. And a lot of the impacts that we're talking about in terms of traffic, potentially noise, are cumulative impacts. It's understood. And I think that that again goes back to the question of what the permit. Conditions are potentially enforcement compliance. And the kind of neighborly conversations that take place that keep us out of a compliance situation. But that are actually really thoughtfully addressed. And confronted. And that's where we are right now. So I think that there's a lot of history that has brought us where we are. Now, I agree with Anne. I think it is a straightforward way of dealing. With these two issues, with the issues of traffic and safety. And again, I just come back to the words of the priory's traffic consultant and the recognition of the need to address. Safety issues. And also some of the concerns that we've heard about noise. If there is a good and practical way of addressing that. That'd be lovely, and we'd all be able to move on. More kids going to graduating from the priory is a good thing. They put out a good product, put out good kids. And the question is just how do we deal with these with these issues in a way that. That is both appropriate and is also compatible with. With the community that we're in. Right, that's what I've got.
Great, thank you. Judith?
Sure. Okay, can you hear me okay?
You're great.
Okay, so I I agree with Commissioner Tard that we're not. I think questioning the value of the priory or the quality of the education. Or the community-minded spirit that they operate in. It's all very much appreciated. Um, I don't want to repeat everything, but I do take away a couple of themes. One is, I'm a bit confused how to think about the traffic. If there are additional mitigation steps, it sounds like it would be prudent to consider them. It also sounds like it's a periodic thing that. You know, I I'm not sure, I personally would want to. Have impose a particular approach to manage. I'm not the traffic expert. And I'm not sure. Where the issue really is. I mean, we all on occasion slow down on the main roads in town, and that. Is not very inconvenient, but if it's. Noted, and and it's a consistent and observable fact, as the expert did say, that that there are some illegal. Traffic maneuvers that, you know, are hazardous if they continue or could be hazardous. You know, in a very catastrophic way. I think we ought to look at, you know, how how can those be prevented? But I don't think that's really something I I personally feel comfortable solving. On the noise part. It's unfortunate that we're using as a point of reference a pandemic period. It is against the ordinance to have amplified outdoor music, the noise ordinance anyway. And yet, it happened, and I'm not saying it shouldn't have. Those are major events. But I think you're hearing the community saying they didn't expect it, they weren't notified, and. They probably don't want it to continue. The, you know, football game noise, I don't know how consistent it is. So I do think some of the solutions that the priory offered as a practical matter to do outreach to. The community saying there's gonna be these events going on, that's great, but I want to be really clear. The noise ordinance of the town prevails regardless of what they do, and that should be something that we all observe. And then the last part for me is I am uncomfortable giving a. Freedom to create thirty eight parking spaces when we don't know what the. The solution that's trying to be created for housing that hasn't, isn't in the planning phase yet. Or building that's not in the planning phase yet is. I don't want to be meager about it. It it clearly has been a parking issue around the priory. But thirty eight, whenever they want, before we know what they're trying to solve for, to me is too much leeway. And I would. Be more comfortable giving leeway to a lesser degree, but I think thirty eight without coming back to us without seeing the plans is too much. I'll stop there.
Do you have a number that you would be comfortable with? For parking, I mean fifteen?
Yeah, so something in that range. I mean, I think those that that area that that range could be fine. I think thirty eight starts. Really impacting the look of the campus before you know what you're solving, to me. I mean, ten to fifteen to me would be. Leeway.
Alright, so we can talk. Paul, you had your hand up. Do you have a brief comment?
Yes, I just, I must. Note that, again, Commissioner Targ, you're, I think you're misconstruing or misrepresenting my my statements.
I'd invite you to clarify that, and I appreciated that you did before, and you identified that the concern. Was with respect to pedestrian automobile conflict.
Yes, I just want to, I just want to capture what I heard you say. Priory has all the ingredients that would create a collision, according to the traffic consultant.
Right, Jim.
I didn't say that. The project, and I speak of the project, not priory, the project. Does not itself create the situation I am, I noted as a pedestrian safety concern. As I was discussing my pedestrian safety planning study. So I I believe, I that's what I said, this is what I believe. And there are pedestrian safety concerns out there. That I believe the towns, town council by approving the conceptual recommendations. I made acknowledges that. Thanks.
Thank you for the clarification, Paul. Okay, I got a few comments. So on the traffic, I think we're all concerned to, you know, different degrees on the traffic. And I also agree with my fellow commissioners. I mean. I see the priory priory as a great asset to the community. So, you know, we're really trying to mitigate. For the impacts, not, you know, prevent the priory from doing the good work that they're doing. So I really appreciate the fact that they've already started to mitigate by using Gambella. Or Gambetta, sorry. And you know what? My thinking would be that we leave it on the priory to mitigate the traffic. And we just agree that it's their responsibility, and if there are complaints. That it come back before the commission, and then we deal with it more directly based on the information that we have. Because otherwise, I I think it's just gonna get too prescriptive of, oh, you have to use this lane for this. Route on this day and stuff like that, and I really would rather not see us get into that. So. I'm pretty comfortable just letting them know that if. The traffic complaints come in, and I think we're also in a some sense, giving the public notice that. If they start seeing a lot of traffic issues on Portola Road that they think are a concern, that the right thing to do is to, excuse me. Basically, send those into the planning department, and then we'll take action on it. So I would be comfortable at that level, given that the priory has already acted. With a traffic study and started mitigating by used, and potentially, you know, they can do split shift between their middle school and. Their upper grades, and and they've already talked about that in their traffic study is one possibility. So I guess I'm willing to trust them going into this, and if. We get a lot of complaints, then then we could deal with it. So that, I guess that's how I'd like to see us deal with the traffic, because I don't have a real good prescriptive way of doing this. I had a concern on maximum enrollment versus ADA. And it's, it's probably pretty minor, but my concern is only that. If you were to, and I'm gonna exaggerate to try to make this point, enroll five hundred students, because a lot of them are somehow magically remote or something. And your ADA stayed within your, you know, three ninety four, but then you have some event, and all five hundred of your enrollees decide to show up. Your ADA would still technically be three ninety four, except it would get blown out by these events. Now, granted, I'm I'm way exaggerating the five hundred. But I'd be pretty comfortable if we just said there's a maximum enrollment cap of ten percent above the three ninety four, because that seems well within. The ADA enrollment numbers that you've been showing us anyway, and that would just kind of keep a limit. So that in the future, if somebody else were to run this school, so, you know, I don't know whether you guys are comfortable with that, but I'd ask you to. Consider something like that as as a possible restriction within the CUP. Um, I'd like to see increased ride share, like that, you know, you're at forty one now. I I mean, I think we were sort of talking forty five. I mean. Most companies in the Bay Area these days are required to be sort of increasing their ride share. So I'm not sure, again, quite what the program is. But to see that number increase will also help, again, mitigate against the traffic. The noise, um, you know, on nearly, our really biggest concern was noise in the evening. And we actually limited to a a couple of professional monitoring, and then it was gonna be self-monitoring. I don't know, you know, non-COVID, how many evening events that you have that there'd be noise. I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, you have to comply with the town noise ordinance. And that's, oh, I mean, and that was the same thing with the winery proposal, is that they have to comply. We didn't put an extra restriction. It's just. We wanted to make sure that they did comply. So, I mean, one thing we could do if we wanted to follow the nearly model is we could say on your next evening outdoor, you know, evening events. That you basically get some professional monitoring at the boundaries to show that you're meeting the town nor noise ordinance. You know, it's not a restriction beyond that. It is a small cost to get that. Or we could do, you could, you know, you could rent noise monitoring equipment, but, I mean. I think what we heard certainly from one resident, and we certainly got in the letter, was that the noise has increased. And Patrick, I I don't expect you to know every town regulation and all the details. But sort of not understanding potentially what the impact is, and at the moment, sort of none of us do, right? Because I mean, we're not standing there while some event's going on, so. I think it'd be worth trying to find some way to. Reassure everybody that indeed. Within the the town noise ordinance. A few, but I'm, I mean, I I get that. I'd also recommend this distribution list. I I think that that's a powerful way to talk to your neighbors, because. Again, I'm a big believer that if people know something's coming. That they're way more accepting of it than it's like. This is a surprise. Now I'm upset because I'm surprised, and then it kind of snowballs, you know, or goes downhill, or whatever analogy you want to use. So I would love to see a distribution list that you just put the announcements out on, and then people can join it as they need to. I mean, then the last piece was the number of Portola Valley students. That are enrolled. Does that number increase with the addition of the forty four students that we're adding? Like, is it a percentage increase? I I just, I I sort of lost track, so I apologize for that. Maybe you can just give me a quick answer in that, Patrick.
No, we would just, we, I think we would, we would like to have as many as possible. We would stay at that twenty percent. So if we, you know, whatever our number is, we would stay at that percentage.
Yeah, okay, fine. So we do, we just.
We'd love to get a twenty five percent, right? Keep sending us the smart ones, Craig, and we'll be alright.
You got it, okay. So we'll just say, they just get incorporated because it's a flat twenty. Twenty percent, yeah, okay, great. And then I'm with Judith on the parking. This this idea, I mean, I I appreciate we're trying to be sort of like, let's just get ahead of this stuff, but. Thirty eight sounds like we're pretty far out ahead of it. So if you guys are comfortable, I'd be much happier with a ten to fifteen beyond the fifteen that you know you need. Because it sounded like there's some problems you already know you need to deal with beyond the fifteen, like it sounded like there's just. Some other people parking places they shouldn't, and a little more buffer sounds reasonable. But thirty eight just, it just sounds like too much. So if you guys are comfortable with that, I think that's the other thing I'd like to pull that back in a little bit.
We're, we're very comfortable with that, thank you.
Okay. So that's kind of where I stand. I mean, how did the other commissioners feel about? Sort of wrapping this stuff up? I mean, either. This is sort of reasonable set of proposals, or you want to modify them, and what what are you guys thoughts?
I'm in favor of putting on a max cap. They're really governed by the ADA, but then also adding a not to exceed number, just. Back to my point that, well, what if the property got bought by somebody else and they had a different vision? So I like that.
And Patrick, before you go on, can I just, let me just try, Patrick, could you guys deal with ten percent over your ADA as a maximum enrollment? Is that, I mean, because right now you're kind of five percent, as I understand it, is is sort of all the numbers you showed us, so I just kind of tried to move it up. That seemed like a ten percent, even if you went to ninety two, you were still safe.
Yeah, I, you know, I I think, I think so. I mean, obviously, if we look at the the sequin numbers, right, four thirty eight, when you look at ten percent, I think that's probably four thirty three-ish, right? I might have to do the numbers a little differently or better. But but, you know, obviously, you know, I think the ADA is important, and I I appreciate your your analogy or your your example. I don't think we'd ever do that, but I appreciate the the example. But I I I think I'd be, I think I'd be, you know, comfortable with the like four thirty five or four thirty eight if we're gonna cap it, but it gets. But that's our, that's our, that's our challenge with the ADA, right? We're, we're, we're trying to report that as three ninety four. That's our.
Sure.
Spot there, so, but.
Yeah, and I, and I'm with you. I think generally, the ADA sounds like better way for all of us to manage this. I'm just trying to put this additional, so if you're comfortable with four thirty five, that's fine. I mean, you know, I was just trying to get us. In some ballpark, that's pretty close to the four thirty eight that would trigger sequoet anyway, so, okay. So go ahead, Anne. I didn't want, I just, I figure if we can kind of get these to a place where we could be definitive, then we can close this out.
Yeah, and talk to me more about doing the traffic by the complaints thing. You know, in the winery one, we had this language like for such and such complaint. And then we called it verified by staff or. We had a little qualification on it, so that it wasn't everybody that calls up. Gets a a hearing of some sort.
And and that would be fine. Yeah, I wasn't trying to get too specific. I was just, I mean, I feel like the priory is gonna deal with this problem. I just wanted that if they don't, it comes back to us. That's really all I was after. So, yeah, I'm I'm fine if we put some language in around, you know, ver- as verified by staff. Just to, just to, you know, filter out the noise.
And then, I don't know, do people agree with this, and can we put constraints to, like, I I do want it to be, or or what seems reasonable to me, I should say. Is if it's an occasional problem for me, like four to six times a year. I don't know that we really need to address it. If it starts being. Once a week, there's cars. You know, eight or more cars backed up such that cars start scooting around. Then we, that that's when I'd want to, I'd want to do something about it.
So are you comfortable, we just said, after four complaints, you know, four sets of complaints. Separated by at least a week? I'm, you know what I mean, I, you know what I'm after, it's just, so four different sort of events, not people complaining about one event, but four events. They're separated out by at least a week. At that point, it could come back to the commission to have a discussion with the priory to how to do further mitigation? That way, it's just not a one-off event?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, I'm open to other suggestions, too.
Yeah, yeah, I I am as well. I was just trying to get us something that was actionable by the priory, so they didn't feel like it was some sort of vague. Thing hanging over their heads.
Through the chair, they also have ideas already about what they can do internally and from Hexagon.
Right.
Right, and they've already made some. Right? And they've already made some improvements. We want to be thoughtful about moving too much traffic to Gambetta because of any safety considerations at Gambetta. So I'm just thinking if there's a way that you might want to inter-integrate this into the monitoring condition. So that you can tell them what your expectations are, that you might want them to, you know, pursue different options and. Monitor those driveways in the queue and then report back. Um, on part of the annual review, what measures they took. What results they found. And then staff could also report if there were, you know, in, in a change in any complaints that we received. Um, and then, you know, keep the normal condition that. If we're receiving a lot of significant complaints, that I'm going to send it up to planning commission anyway.
Right. Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that. So just you're, you're saying. Do some monitoring and wrap it into the annual report.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I, I'm, I'm perfectly okay with that. Anne, is that?
Yeah, I like that better. Yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, other thoughts, Anne?
Oh, no, I think I'm. Good with that. Um, yeah, I'm not prepared to, um. Ask anything special on the noise. I do think it's, um, a special case right now. I do feel assured though that they are. Uh, uh, like everybody's supposed to comply with the town noise ordinance, which is some number of decibels at your property line. So. We can just reiterate that we expect that.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
Great. Nicholas?
Oh, I'm okay with the parking, but it sounds like the priori is okay. Reducing the. Uh, full approval for the thirty-eight, so. Maybe not an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm still troubled by parking. Excuse me, not by parking. Uh, I think we have a direction there with respect to traffic. And notwithstanding. Uh, Paul's comments. Uh, a hex of recent comments, uh. And there is a dangerous, I, I believe that not mischaracterizing his statement, saying there is a dangerous condition. I'd like not to exacerbate that condition. I'd like to make that condition better. And simply saying, yeah, let's see how it goes and we'll report back. Seems like the antithesis of planning. And that is reacting. And I'm all for monitoring. And for. Adaptive management. But we've had this condition that's been present. Under existing conditions for years, right?
Oh, though may I, Ed, I, I do think they did something recently in the last month or two. That changed it because otherwise I'd agree with you. I wouldn't want to just monitor that it's a bad situation.
Right, right. And so there, there's, there's something that, that, that may improve it. And that, that's, that's good, but don't we? Don't we think about this in a thoughtful manner, in a prospective manner? Rather than thinking. Well, let's see, let's see how this dangerous condition goes if we add some more. People to the mix.
Right, but isn't.
That doesn't seem like, that doesn't seem like good planning to me.
Right, but some of this seems to me like this is the town's responsibility. To think about the crosswalk and some of the other things. That Paul was suggesting not as part of this project. And I think that's what I heard from Paul, not that there. Aren't some safety concerns, but he didn't feel like this project was significantly changing those safety concerns. And so I think you're absolutely right. We need to do something, but I'm not sure. That other than asking maybe the prior, priori to do some monitoring. I mean. You know, at the end of the day, it's not up to them to manage like quarter Madera students. I mean, that's not their responsibility. So how do we find that balance?
Well, I, I think it's interesting conversation and I'm sorry that we're having it at. Ten o'clock. On our second meeting and that didn't come to us. I think that the. Uh, observation that the priori has some ideas is, is right. Kind of would like to have had those ideas fleshed out. And presented so we can say, yeah, this is making things. Better. Rather than adding more people to a. Dangerous condition. And you're right, you know, it's one of these things where. Uh, there, there's traffic on the road. Can't control how people are going to react. Can think about having a. Uh, a crosswalk or an entrance point in the middle of an S curve. So that. The, uh, the, the crosswalk and the people come right up on you. I think that that's, uh. What we heard from, one of the things that we heard from the. Uh, transportation, uh, expert. So. I don't know. I, I'm, I'm interested to know what those additional things are. And, uh. And how we go about, uh, how we go about addressing that. For adding. You know. Another, however we slice it. Twenty percent of the population. Or. Twelve and a half percent of the population, depending on how you want to think about it. Or noise, is that? Is that a, is that a impactful issue? Not an impactful issue? Believe that we're hearing that there is already some. Uh, some issue right now. And. But what, what, what are, what are the mitigations that you're going to propose? Before we add on another. Twelve and a half to. Uh, twenty percent, uh, on campus. And I'm, I'm, I'm looking for that.
Right, and.
So.
You talk noise and safety. Do you have proposals for either one of those?
Well. Yeah, I, I think that one thing that we do is, you know. You, you, you can do it hard by putting points of compliance, kind of like what we did with Neely. Whether it's during the day or whether it's night. That's something that can be done, could be proposed. I bet there's probably something smarter. Uh, or more tailored, uh, to the circumstances that could be done. And with respect to transportation. You know, it's been said a couple of, three times now. I'm not a transportation and traffic expert. But if. There are good ideas. Carter is almost a transportation expert. But, uh, uh, if they're good ideas, uh, that. Uh, the planning director has identified that, uh. Uh, the priori has, I'd love to hear them and figure out how we, how we begin to integrate them. With respect to the parking, I'm happy to, uh, uh, to, to defer. Having the number that we, that were proposed seemed like an awful lot. Having a smaller number provides some flex. I don't have a, a problem with that. So I'm looking for ideas. Before we start adding in more people.
Okay, I guess what I'm struggling with is. I also don't want this to turn into a, a six-month CUP. Oh.
Great, then, 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 then let's have some ideas. I mean, I love it.
So from where I'm sitting, um, they did implement one of the ideas. In November. And by all accounts. Uh, including mine, it helped or fix, maybe even fixed it. Let's say fixed it. We don't know what the effect of the twelve and a half in percent increase is going to be. But if we say we want the priori to monitor it. They understand what the issue is and they have. Other ideas that they can try. And then it's their responsibility to assess those ideas and try them out. And then do some more monitoring and see if it works. Uh, that. Sounds pretty good to me right now.
But, and I'm typically really good with things like that. But I like the, I like the ideas to be graduated. Say it doesn't work, we're going to do this. And so you actually know what the, you know, what the story is and you can have an adaptive management. Rather than simply say. Uh, yeah, well, let's go and see how it is and well, maybe we'll ask after blah, blah, blah. You've already increased the number of people. Compounding the dangerous situation. So.
All right. So let me, Carter's had his hand up and I think Camus wants to say something too. So let me go with Carter. Just try to keep it brief, Carter, when you.
No, I, I will. Uh, I'm, my intention is not to, not to use up air. I, I want to make sure that, you know, we've got, you know, the, the nexus of the conditions. You know, uh. Kind of situated. We've got a couple of noise complaints. You know, that were around, uh, you know, a couple of COVID events. And we've got an existing traffic condition outside the, you know, the priori's control. You know, that is. By all rights, you know, defective that the town, you know, understands is defective. And then, you know, we've already. Studied it and approved a process to, you know, to start solving. The, uh. The amount of additional traffic that the priori is going to create with this, these additional students. Has been studied by the town's expert. And has been defined as insignificant. I think it's appropriate for the planning commission to overstep that. You know, and say that they don't trust their own town consultants. You know, uh, recommendations, you know, which was that the. Impact is, you know, insignificant. In spite of that, the priori, you know, retained Hexagon, one of the other. Uh, you know, Bay Area cons, you know, traffic consultants. Uh, of, of equal recruit, you know, has said that for the most part, there's no problem. Uh, and there probably won't be a problem, but there's a whole bunch of things that you could potentially do. That are very easily, easily implemented, that don't require infrastructure, don't require any construction. You know, to, to do. So. You know, to, to get back to your point, Craig, you know. Where, where I had heard you headed was. Priori has been a trustworthy, trustworthy neighbor. You know, that has managed the property since before the town was incorporated. You know, and that the issues of traffic, noise, you know, are easily manageable by them. You know, and that since there haven't been a bunch of complaints, there haven't been any incidents. You know, there haven't been accidents associated, you know, with the traffic stuff. The noise. You know, they're willing to do the, you know, the notice to the neighbors, you know, they'll respond to complaints because they've always responded to complaints. Uh, and I, I just think that in the situation, you know, where we're at right now. It's best for, you know, for the priori and for the town. To let the priori continue to be the good neighbor they are. You know, and for the planning department to act as a clearinghouse, you know, for those complaints, just like they always have been. You know, and then if there's a series of complaints, then bring it, you know, then the planning director would have the opportunity to. To call the priori in because, you know, in any, yeah, there doesn't have to be any specific violation. You know, for the town to call the priori in because it's a conditional use. And it's a conditional use because the property is zoned for single family residential. And it's zoned for single, right, right, we residential, you know, at that density, there would be fifty homes. You know, and potentially with SB nine, there could be a hundred, you know, you know, single family properties. So I think that it's best right now to just focus in on the little things. That the, you know. Say that we've all studied this, we're all a little concerned, but the priori has all of the tools and all of the. You know, wherewithal to manage it themselves. You know, and if the neighbors have issues. They'll make sure that they complain, you know, to the planning director.
Thank you, Carter. Thank God you didn't go long on me. Camus, did you want to make a comment?
I think Carter said it all. I mean, I wish I would like to say that, you know, we do now with the Hexagon report have a baseline of what this queuing condition is. Um, you know, as Commissioner Tark said, this is an existing. Condition, priori is part of it, but it's also, it's a town problem. Portola Valley, the town is looking into studying this through the pedestrian study. Um, Hexagon has provided two very specific. Measures to avoid the queuing, which is, would be priori's contribution to this whole problem. You know, that queuing right now as it exists today are two cars. On Portola Road at drop off on one of the two days that they studied. For less than sixty seconds. So that's priori's contribution. To the safety issue is two cars on Portola Road waiting to turn. Um, into the prior, priori's drive. The two measures that Hexagon, um, suggested was one. Expanding the use of Gambetta Lane. Um, for example, to parents that arrive before three o'clock. In addition to the carpooling and, um, rideshare folks. And in Hexagon's opinion, that alone would, would eliminate the queue. And then the other suggestion was staggering, um, the drop off. Or sorry, the pickup, because the pickup was really the issue. They found no queuing whatsoever in the mornings. Um, so, you know, pri- priori is, is more than willing to expand use of Gambetta Lane. They could consider this staggering. That might be difficult implementing because parents pick up both. Middle schoolers and upper, upper schoolers, but we could consider something like that. But. You know, in response to Commissioners Tard's, um, suggestion of sort of tiering, you know, I think the first. Measure that we would be willing to implement if we wanted, if you wanted us to implement a specific. Measure would be the expansion of, of Gambetta Lane. Two parents arriving before three o'clock. Um, because Hexagon observed that that was really the issue was parents arriving early, starting at two thirty. Cars would build up and children, the students don't get out until three, three oh five. So that was one, you know, it's very specific. It's in the report. Priori is willing to implement that and, and have that included as a condition.
Thank you, Camus. Okay, Judith?
Are, are you just looking for general comments?
No, I, I think I got your gen- I'm, I'm trying to. I'm trying to move the CUP forward if we can.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm trying to come up with some specifics. To work around. That are sort of actionable and manageable, not too onerous, um, but get at the, the underlying issues. So I had sort of proposed some, um, and I guess I was looking for, you know, either it sounds good or nah, it doesn't, it seems crazy or, you know. And so Nicholas and Anna both given feedback along those lines.
Yeah, I mean. It's hard because I think. This is a general issue and it's. You know, unfortunate, we didn't have a little more. Background on, on the pedestrian issues and what's causing it, um, to be more specific. I think there is, you know, is it possible to have a requirement that this be also tied to the. Pedestrian Traffic Safety Committee, whatever they're called these days. As they look at. Portola Road and. You know, I would think the right solution is to work. Thinking bigger picture. But if the applicant wants a very specific to-do item. It's hard, um, because I don't know what's actually going to move the dial on increasing. Safety or decreasing risk to pedestrians. Um, I think the Gambetta Lane. Adjustment seems to make sense to me. I don't know if it's actually going to. Move a dial on, on safety issue. So. You know, I'd be open to that. Um, I am sympathetic with the, the applicant wanting to have something it can walk away with and, and do. Um, the other aspect of what I heard. The, the expert potentially concerned about is the traffic non-compliance. I don't know if there's any way of monitoring, like having. A patrol, uh. Monitoring that intersection and, and kind of doing what they do at Portola and Alpine for a while. Just having someone that's enforcing. In a more direct way, but I don't know if that's something the applicant can do or whether that's. Just, you know, the town's responsibility or, or wider jurisdiction. But to me, um, making people. Take more time and be more observant in going through that area when they're in the car makes sense. Um, I don't know if that's something we can put out there today and. You know, trying specific, um. Uh, things we could make a suggestion, but I, I just don't know that we're going to come up tonight with. What will work? So I think what we're really trying to do is. A few specific things that. Likely will work. And so I'd be, oh, I'm open on that. I just don't know which one or more would. Would do the trick. Um, I, I kind of turn it back to my fellow commissioners to see if they have. my fellow commissioners to see if they have strong feelings about which one of those, um, one or more specific approaches they would be more comfortable with.
Let me suggest this. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if I I'd like to talk about what that might look like, but Judith, I know that you may have other points that you'd like to raise as well.
No, you can go.
So it sounds like there may be something that we believe may work or maybe making things better, which is uh, this new uh, traffic route that is being implemented. So there's probably something like a traffic management plan that needs either to be further developed or uh, established, which includes mitigation measures that include uh, the new uh, traffic route. And such other measures as are found necessary to, you know, Camus may well undoubtedly have some ideas to reduce the point of intersection from a dangerous condition. And we go and revisit that on a periodic basis. And that's going to leave some open-ended obligation on the part of the priory because it is an adaptive management kind of issue. And I'm open to what thresholds or triggers might be. But I'm sympathetic to the idea that we don't want to be here for six months until ten thirteen for the next, uh, for the next period of time. So I think that that's one thing, and I think we could probably do something similar over on the noise uh, front as well. So I'm not sure we're going to get ourselves to a completely mitigated or satisfactory condition. But I think we do have points of compliance which are established under code. If we're going to increase the population, it's going to be harder priory to meet those. But we do have points of compliance. And we do have standards. And we may end up, or I think we should establish a um, noise management plan that again is responsive to what conditions actually are. And that may be able to move us uh, forward in terms of population. If there's a desire to have the uh, twelve and a half increase, we have a set point at four twenty one, which was, I believe, the de facto uh, population cap that proposed that we move forward and to round things out. Sounds like we have a rough consensus at something like fifteen parking spaces. So somebody can figure out and that may or may not be acceptable to 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 everybody, to Judith, who I see looking pensive on that. Uh, but I think that that uh, gets that can advance uh, the ball. At least that would be satisfactory from my perspective.
So if I were to sum up the things that I listed, things you listed, we've got a traffic management plan, a noise management plan, additional parking limited to, so I think what we're talking about is thirty total, right? So fifteen plus a buffer of fifteen. Um, maximum enrollment of four thirty five, um, total students, not ADA.
No, maximum of four twenty one.
No, I I think so. What I was saying was I was putting a, so they're doing ADA and I just wanted a cap. So four twenty one is what the enrollment would be with their ADA, but I wanted, I I'm happy with four thirty five. Just I want to keep it so it doesn't balloon to some crazy, I mean, their ADA is still their ADA, so.
The ADA is the guy, is the number they got to hit. This other one's just a also not to exceed, but they can't go to the maximum enrollment.
So you're going to go and monitor ADA on an annual basis, Greg?
Yeah.
We already do.
What we do right now.
No, we're going to go and do that. And then we're going in, and if we're over, then priory ends up uh, having a smaller class, admits fewer people. And we end up in the same kind of compliance story that we're, that we've been in for the last how many years?
Right. But you know, I think that's on us, you know, if we want to hold the priory and say, you know, next quarter, it's down or we're going to cancel your CUP or next, you know, next enrollment. I mean, it's, if we want to be hard on this, we can choose to be that hard. I think we've decided prior has been a good neighbor and we've let it slide, but I I mean, prior's tried to keep it down. I don't think they've done a great job. But we also haven't said, okay, this is your last shot. I think that's on us. If we want to say next year, you're basically ADA needs to hit this number. And if it doesn't, we're going to start pulling back your CUP.
Well, respectfully, in two thousand nineteen, that's what we did.
Well, but what did we do about it? I mean, with COVID and stuff. So, and I think what we're trying to do right now is you're trying to rectify the CUP, much like we've done with other CUPs where we're sort of correcting, you can call them deficiencies or making it match the sort of realities. Um, so, I mean, we've gotten from Patrick, he's saying that these are the numbers that they feel like that they need. He's not saying this is a forever increasing number. We want to get bigger and bigger and bigger. So, I mean, I think at some point we can say, you're too big. Now, are you suggesting that we define the penalty now for exceeding ADA for more than, say, two years?
And rather increase the number, does the number that the de facto number that was asked with the ADA that was proposed is four twenty one. And that's kind of what was, that's what was being asked for. If.
No, ADA wasn't, where's four twenty one coming from? That was sort of, it seems like you're taking the three ninety four, I think, and then.
It's three ninety four.
Right. And then you're adding if the the max enrollment could be four twenty one maybe, right? Is that?
Right. So four twenty one with an ADA of whatever percent in the staff report brings you down to uh, inflates you to four twenty one.
Just, just to be clear, that, that, that four twenty one, that's a variable number that, that, that we don't know, right? We, we could be four twenty and still be at four ninety four, right? I mean, that, that could, I mean, three ninety four, right? I mean, that's the, the whole point of ADA is, is we looked at our historical numbers and that's our history, right, which is important. Um, you know, we've been over to just respectfully, we've been over, you know, our, we've exceeded the three fifty four times, right? And by a total of seventeen students. Um, so, and, and we did work to mitigate that by accepting seventeen less students over a two-year period. Now our yield was still good. Um, but the point is we can't control always those numbers. So, so I, I appreciate Mr. Taylor, your um, your, your opportunity to allow us a little bit of breathing room and, and flexibility, knowing that we want to stay at that three ninety four. That's important to us, right? That's a, that's a critical point to us. And, and with respect to the, the noise and the traffic, you know, just to be fair, we haven't received the noise complaints, but we, we've never gotten them. So, uh, and if we did, obviously we would want to work with them. It's important to us too, right? We, we want to be good. We want to be excellent. And the same thing with traffic. We look forward to working with the town to mitigate an issue that clearly has gone on. And I think maybe we can do something about it. But I don't know if that's, that, that, I think that's a separate issue from what our CUP is and we are, we can't wait to work with the town on that. Um, because it's good for us and it's good for the town. So I, I just think those two things are separate. We, we, we do, of course, want to follow every ordinance that the town has and the noise ordinance is, and we will be compliant with those. Same thing with traffic. We want to make sure that we're providing our students and the town, you know, great access to good thoroughfares. Uh, and we, and again, we want to be good partners, which I think we've done for sixty five years. So I, I appreciate the love, you know, that that's being shown to prior and we look forward to continuing that.
Yeah, I think so. Patrick, I think what you're suffering from is, you know, when CUPs come up for renewal or discussion, this is the time to sort of reset things and get things that, so I think that's why we're talking through this stuff. Um, and, you know, I'm comfortable saying that there'll be a traffic management plan and there'll be a noise management plan. And we can work with the planning director and a commissioner or two to define it. Uh, and then we review it in a year. I mean, I, I'm personally okay with that as a way to move forward. Um, I think that's going to be a condition of the CUP, just to be clear. But I think we can use that as a way to move forward and not end up sort of extending this. Yeah, go ahead, Camus.
Yeah. So on the ADA enrollment, I mean, I think our request was to um, change the cap from enrollment to ADA because traditionally that's how it's been enforced and implemented by the town. And when Patrick says we were over seventeen students, that was under the enrollment. When you're looking at ADA, which is how the CUP has traditionally been implemented, we've only been over, I think, four to a maximum of six students. Was that right, Patrick? Um, so just a handful on the ADA. I'm not quite understanding the need to have two caps here, that the ADA cap and the enrollment cap. Unless it's to ensure that we're staying under the twenty five percent um, in order to qualify for the categorical exemption. I could under, I can understand that, but I think the, the point was really to look at the number of students coming onto campus physically on average per day. And I think the school is willing to live with the four thirty five, that that's what the commission is more comfortable with. Um, but that, that's just my opinion. Um, on the noise, I'm not sure that we really have, um, the, the data to even understand whether there is a noise problem. I think looking at the, the ordinance, it's clear what the town ordinance is. There's been two complaints. We, we received them today at three o'clock in the afternoon. Um, we, I don't think the school's received any noise complaints before. So I think before getting into a noise management plan, maybe my suggestion would be in the next um, annual report that we monitor noise at a certain points and report to the town what, what those, um, what, what that is before we get to mitigation for, for a noise problem. That doesn't sound like the school has.
Yeah, I guess that's.
And there's not the data there.
Yeah. And, and that's what I was thinking. I mean, I was just thinking that the noise monitoring, noise management plan was literally for the first year, just that. It was just going to be, let's monitor it and get the numbers. I, I completely agree with you. I don't think there's any like, and now you have to change when you have football games because we just don't know. I mean, so I'm, I'm completely with you, but I think it would be good to just say we're going to agree on what the monitoring plan is and how it's going to be reported. That, to me, that would be the noise management plan.
Okay. So maybe we just call it a monitoring plan, you know?
That's, I, I'm fine with.
Where we monitor at the property lines and certain dates or that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, Camus, it's a noise management plan and the first step in it is monitoring.
Well, what I'm saying is there, that we first need to know whether there's a noise issue before you manage noise. If there's not an, an issue, then there's no need to manage it. So my, my proposal would be for the first report that we come back to the town with with the data and, and if there is a problem, then we would take steps.
Respectfully, we've had a couple of people who have come forward. You know, I'm up on a hillside and I listen to the priory. It doesn't bother me. But is it blowing through the noise ordinance? The answer is yes. So, and there, there, there is a, there is an issue, but I think that it is important, just as you said, that we go and monitor it, we figure out what the story is, and then we go and address. Doesn't seem unreasonable.
Yeah, I mean, and I would ask, when I read the noise ordinance, yes, what I'm seeing there is there is a prohibition on amplified noise that can be heard from neighboring properties, but there's an exception for graduation. So that's fine. Amplified noise is allowed at graduation, period. Um, there's also an exception for conditional use permits. If there's certain circumstance, you know, certain amplified noise can be made through the CUP process. I'm assuming that's what was done for Neely Winery and that's why they had the noise monitored. I'm not sure.
This out right now and we, and the next six months figuring out what term should be in the CUP. I don't think that's a good use of anybody's time. I don't think that will get your client to where it wants to be this evening.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I was going to suggest is I, I think what I'd like to do to move the CUP forward is just agree we're going to have, I, I think we ought to call it the noise management plan, but we're also agreeing that to start with, that's going to be, we're going to agree on some monitoring and some reporting. And then we'll look at it in a year and then we'll decide if there's further mitigation that needs to be done. And that way it'll give us a vehicle to, to manage this stuff without actually having tonight to prescriptively come up with some set of details. So I think that's what I'd like to see on the noise. And the same thing with the traffic. I mean, I think we really need some basic monitoring of the queuing. You guys have some ideas on what to do. I think that's great. Um, and then I, again, I'd like to see us report back on that stuff. And then in a year, we can look at it, make some decisions on whether there's more mitigation. In the meantime, I think the town's got work to do as well that we've discussed. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can use these management plans as a way of incorporating and encapsulating this stuff. And then moving the CUP forward with these sort of inside it. And then we'll define them. Like I said, I'm happy to have Laura do this or, you know, Laura and a planning director or two could need to do it. Uh, but I don't think it needs to come back to the full commission. I think what we need initially is pretty straightforward and, and I would expect it to be pretty simple for the first year. And then if we need to extend it because there are problems that we found, then we'll deal with it then. So Nicholas, what, is that going to be acceptable to you? I mean, like I said, I'm trying to find a balance here so that we can move forward.
Yeah, I think that's fine. We're going to need to identify some findings as to why we're doing this.
Yeah.
And just to remind everybody what we're doing and why we're, and why we're doing it.
Right. So you're going to help with the findings when we get there. So let's try to get there. So.
Or as a star.
Okay, um, I'm willing to just let go of the maximum enrollment. I, I, if I, I was after something a little bit different, which was just to keep a lot of people from showing up, even if the ADA, I just, in general, the thing I don't like about averages is they don't tell you the max. All they tell you is the average. And what you don't see is if there's some big spike. But in this case, it's all probably pretty unlikely anyway. So I'm willing just to drop it because I think it's just at this point adding noise. So.
Well, but I thought Anne was on board with that and.
I was, but I see it gets, it does make so much confusion. Uh, I'm fine with it this way too. I, I was in favor of it because if the world changes and learning goes to a lot of online, then suddenly their number could be a lot bigger. I know that's not the current prior's plan. So I like the idea of a
Well, do you want to keep it?
So that if everything went virtual, it's still not so many, but.
Okay, well then let's keep it.
If there's a consensus, then I will be part of that.
Great, great. Then I'm part of it as well. So, so Camus, that, this is the maximum enrollment cap. This is not some ADA cap. The ADA is three ninety four.
And we're only going to monitor the three ninety four, right? That's the, the.
They're going to give us both, they're going to give us both numbers. They're going to give us every year, they're going to give us total enrollment. And to the point, if they decided to go virtual, they can't virtually enroll five hundred students. They can only enroll three hundred and thirty five, or I mean, four hundred and thirty five. It's getting late, sorry.
Mm-huh.
So we'll stick it in. It, like I said, I, I think it's going to have no material impact on anything I've heard from the applicant in terms of what they want to do. It just is a sort of future prevention against some big change in life.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Taylor, just to be clear. So we, so can you just reiterate which one is going to be the the, I guess, the regulation number for us?
I think both of them are, I mean. I think both of them are. I mean, I think the one that's going to matter is the, the three ninety four is the ADA. But if you enroll more than four hundred and thirty five students, that's going to be a problem as well.
But Craig, we, these do need a hierarchy. The three ninety four is the number that the priory needs to go to. Then under no case can they be up at the four thirty five. But what we don't want them to do is go, oh, four thirty five in our attendance, you know, great, let's enroll four thirty five. And then the ADA, you know, is only modestly below that. That's not the formula.
No, it's, you have an ADA of three ninety four, which is what you're asking for and a max enrollment of four thirty five. Is that, I mean, I don't see that there's a problem. I would have thought the four thirty five was well outside of the amount of enrollment. You would need to get your ADA number at three ninety four.
It is, it is. It makes sense. I'm just trying, I just want to make, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's, and it's getting late, so I, I apologize.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, okay, so. All right, so I, I think we, we've gotten it down to these five things. I think we've all, we're all fairly in consensus. So just to review, traffic management plan, noise management plan, parking limited to thirty. We're fifteen now and fifteen for future use. Um, a max enrollment of four thirty five and ADA of three ninety four. And a district, and some kind of distribution list that you'll publicize so people can sign up for it. And you'll put stuff out on, ahead of, you know, major events. You know, if you do a quarterly, whatever's appropriate, but you know, use it as a good nature to, I mean, a good neighbor tool. Um, so I think that's what's on the table. So Laura, what do we need to do now? We need to have findings to back up this set of. Sort of restrictions that were basic or requirements that we're adding to the CUP?
Um, yes, you should, we should look at the findings and think about if there's language that you want to add um, into that, into the findings.
Okay.
So, um. So the finding number two is on red page ten.
Can you put that up on the screen, please?
Uh, through the chair, uh, do you want me to put the editable doc, editable documents or it's like? Editable document or just the, the PDF with the red pages in, in case we do live editing?
Um, you can put the live one up in case we edit it.
Okay, I have that one. So let me share my screen.
We're going to see if you can do as good a job of live editing as we did on the Neil.
That was a top standard. That was.
That was, that was, that's a pretty high, pretty high bar. But I'm, I'm hoping that we're going to keep this significantly.
This is a lot easier.
I hope so. And I appreciate everybody's patience here. I'm sorry this takes so long, but we're, we're going to get through this tonight.
Okay. Um, sorry, something just happened. I got jinxed when we were talking about accepting the challenge. My computer decided to freeze on me.
Okay, I can see that you started to screen share, but there's nothing up.
Yeah, and I'm just getting the thinking icon right now and I'm not sure why it's doing that.
Okay, um.
Oh, there we go. Okay. My computer. Said I could accept the challenge. Okay, um, so we're at the.
Number two.
Okay, I'm gonna just uh, blow this up a little bit more so people can see it.
Yeah, because right now we're seeing two pages on the screen. It'd be nice if you just got it to.
Are you seeing this?
Uh, I'm seeing two pages right now.
Okay, now I see what's going on. Okay.
So we want to, to Commissioner's target's point earlier, right? We want to make some statements around um, noise and traffic, I think. Is that correct?
Yeah, that seemed like.
That's what I had in mind.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I feel like the traffic should go on number three.
Yeah, I think traffic on number three and noise on number four.
Yeah, your screen just disappeared Dylan, if you intended us to see it.
Yeah, I gotta push it to the screen where the zoom box is not, so I'm doing it this way.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. This is better. Okay, um, so everybody can see this, right? It's one screen.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Think so. It may be the. Next.
Yeah, the next one, I think number three. Um, so we already have in number three, um. A statement that the traffic and parking assessment report conducted for the proposed amendment noted no substantial changes to existing local street traffic volumes. Um, so I think this is where we probably want to add something. Um.
We could as.
Or alter this language.
Uh, however dangerous conditions.
How, how about to limit the potential?
Well, I think that the planning, excuse me, the traffic. Expert identified that this an existing condition. So to limit the, to limit the potential for further exacerbating. And for. Maintaining this language from the findings that we need to make the compatibility of the.
Okay, so how about to, I'm thinking to limit the potential for exacerbating existing. Traffic and pedestrian conditions. The applicant is developing a traffic management plan.
No, it's, it's different than that. There's an existing condition and we need to make, if we're going to amend. If we're going to keep the. CUP, then the CUP has to be. Compatible with. Uh. Has to be, what, again, I don't, I don't have the, the finding, a, of a computer problem here. Uh, has to be uh, compatible. Uh, with existing land uses. That's not the language, but it's akin to that. Again, I don't have the findings in front of me, but. If we have a dangerous condition that is being created by the CUP. Then we have a kind of a fundamental problem. We have a compliance problem.
So I don't think the dangerous condition is created by the CUP. I think the evidence in the record is that there's a condition. That has the potential to be dangerous. This project is, is contributing a very small piece to that. Which we don't think is.
Part of what we heard, Laura. What we also heard is that the driveway is located in an S curve. So people come upon it in an unexpected and sudden manner.
You know, for me, the issue is, um, what the traffic consultant said and was in here is that it's a small increase on the um. Traffic on Portola Road. But for me, the issue, and maybe we can word this in there, is that small changes in school traffic. At the specified times, you know, I drop off and pick up can have large effects on the. Spillover of cars onto Portola Road. I kind of only want to fix that problem. I feel like we're not going to fix the S curve. We're not going to fix the whole crosswalk thing. If we could just make it so that the priory traffic almost never, very rarely, actually backs itself up. Onto Portola Road, that would go a long way to reducing the. The bad condition that happens sometimes.
Right, but their contribution is the potential for queuing, right? Their contribution are their people turning into their site.
Right. I'd like to mention that here.
Um. Because, right, we, we have from Hexagon a proposal that they think will reduce the potential for the queuing. That's what will go in presumably to the traffic management plan. But I don't know, um. Commissioner Targ, you're also trying to address the pedestrian issue, their contribution to the pedestrian issue?
Well, I think that what we heard from the traffic consultant who may want to speak for himself. Uh, is that there is a. Pedestrian. Automobile conflict or potential for conflict. Uh, with ingredients.
The town is, the town is already working on a project to try to address the larger portion of that. So we just need to.
Then, then if we take care of prior's portion and everybody else's portion, then it all goes away. Right? And if it doesn't. Then we're going to need to. See some further enhancement like putting in flashing lights in a crosswalk to make sure that kids don't get hit.
But, but that's already the town's plan is to put in flashing lights in a crosswalk. We just don't know the final design and timing.
Then, you know, then, then there will be very limited additional items that will need to be included in the traffic management plan.
Right, I think what we're trying to do right now is just get the language in here so we can have a traffic management plan. That the priory will create with the planning director. So what, what language do we need to get in this finding to? Justify the traffic management plan.
How about something like this? However, um, small changes to. School traffic can cause queuing on Portola Road. Which we'd like to avoid.
How about small changes to traffic can exacerbate existing conditions?
Yeah, I wish we'd talk about the queuing because that's what I really want to uh, get rid of. And, and I actually think it may not exist right now, now that they've implemented the gambit.
But we're gonna, but Anne, we're gonna ask them to do a traffic management plan. So.
Yeah.
All we're trying to do is get enough wording in here so they do a traffic management plan. And we think this is going to, that we think that traffic management plan will get rid of the queuing. So.
That's good.
Okay, yeah, just, that's good enough.
We want to mention the traffic management plan, right? The applicant's going to prepare a traffic management plan. And, and you know, something like it'll be part of the planning commission's annual review. Is that acceptable?
That's good.
Because then we're saying that there's a potential for this, but we have an approach to, to address it.
Sorry, um, was that me typing? I was just, I was referencing the actual condition in our updated. Do we need to do that or we just?
Well, we haven't written, we haven't written that yet, but we'll be able to do that. We'll, we'll, we'll get to that in just a minute.
Okay.
So just put an X, yeah. So is there comfort with this language from everyone?
I can live with it.
Yep.
Um, if it's okay through the chair, Camus, does that seem agreeable applicant's perspective?
Yeah, I would maybe just, yeah, it's fine. I mean, state with the purpose of preparing the traffic manager plan to. Um, avoid this exacerbation, just avoid this, I guess.
Comma, which will be included in the annual reporting.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my preference would be that it be limited to queuing because that's what we know is, um, we have the baseline for that. I'm not really clear on what other existing conditions there are. It hasn't been reported in either of the two traffic reports, you know, on this particular amendment.
I, I'd personally heard the. Traffic violations, you know, people swerving into the different lanes to avoid waiting. So from my perspective, it needs to be looked at.
So maybe we specify that as safety issues. I, I mean, just existing condition seems a little bit vague.
Yeah, that's right. Unsafe, unsafe conditions, particularly with respect to pedestrians.
Okay.
And so if we want to.
Um, prepare a traffic management plan to avoid exacerbation of unsafe conditions?
Unsafe existing conditions or get rid of existing?
Yeah, it, are we, in the first.
I think you get rid of existing.
Yeah, I prefer get ready, get rid of existing.
Same thing in the sentence, well.
It's implied that exacerbation, yeah.
Do you need to say unsafe conditions in the first sentence?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, how about can exacerbate unsafe conditions? In the first red line, uh, yeah, take out that existing and change it to unsafe. What do you think of that? Right? Fair.
And then remove. Or repeat it here?
Yeah, repeat it's okay.
Yeah, or you could just second, second sentence could be simplified to avoid this. The applicant will prepare a traffic.
Hmm, hmm, that's good.
Yeah, just this.
Yeah.
Okay, good for everyone.
Yep.
That works for me.
Okay, then I think um, noise would be a number four.
Yep.
So adversely affect the abutting property.
Uh-uh, I see.
So we're trying to capture here, we don't know that there's a noise problem, right? We have um, recent complaints, but we have an unusual um, two years with the pandemic. So I think we want to collect information, collect data. Um, I think there's comfort around the language of noise ma- um, management plan with the first step being monitoring and reporting. You what, is that kind of the consensus?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um.
I think that this probably comply with the noise ordinance except as specifically provided you're in.
So I would suggest that um, the applicant shall document that it's in compliance with the town ordinance. And to the extent it is out of compliance. It will propose. Measures.
The planning commission shall uh, approve measures.
Should we put language that the document, the compliance, should that be included in the annual reporting similar to the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, so uh, that accurate, ask, the, the applicant shall um, include. Documentation within required. And or reporting.
And I would just suggest, you know, I mean, I'm looking at the Neely winery condition. Their monitoring condition is only for two, the first two years. So I would, I would ask that ours be one year, maximum two years. I mean, I think right now the problem is we don't really have a baseline and provide that in this first year of reporting.
So, so the issue is I don't. Are we trying to get the priory to actually do the same monitoring? Because that could be documented, but there still could be neighbor issues that get brought to the town's attention that might indicate non-compliance. So I, I'm a little confused how that first sentence is really going to work. They have to document something. And if this is pretty standard law, I'll defer to you, but just practically speaking, I wonder how it works.
Well, the phrasing, I think, is a little bit awkward, which isn't the biggest deal, right? But what we're trying to, what we're trying to say is that we're going to figure out what data is necessary, right? And staff and the applicant, maybe a planning commissioner will look at that together and say, this is what we're trying to report. And they'll report that for the first year. Right? And that'll create kind of a baseline. We'll see if there's complaints. You know, as the pandemic continues to recede and the school is more in active use, we'll get back to more of a normal circumstance. And then I think the planning commission will have to look at it from there because there are certain elements of this use that are going to create noise, right? And it's part of the planning commission's role to balance that, the positive and the negative aspects of that.
Yep. Is there a set month that the priory comes up for CUP annual review?
Yes, in June, under the, this current set of conditions is how we have it drafted. So at the end of the year, they would report on what just happened.
I see. Because on the traffic, I don't have any need for the traffic report or very, not much need for this June. Let's say we increase their enrollment. They'll, their class will go up next September, right? I really want the data on the traffic in after September. I would just hate for a lot of work to be done when it's not the thing I really care about.
Okay, so Dylan's working on the fine wording. Do the planning, no, this is a choice. Sometimes the planning commissioners work on this very fine language. Sometimes the planning commissioners leave it to staff to finalize this language. And sometimes we confer with the chair. How would you like to handle this very fine level of detail?
I, I'm comfortable taking it through the chair. I mean, I, I think we've all agree on what we want. I don't think this is a very effective use of our time, both given the hour and the progress that we're making.
I'm fine. Staff writing it or staff and one planning commissioner.
Agreed.
You okay with that, Nicholas?
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I think it'd be just fine for Judith to go and review it.
That'd be fine with me. I, I'm happy to do it, but if Judith is willing, she's better at it than I am. So.
She is the best at the fine language. She's the best.
Yeah. So Judith, do you, do you have time to deal with it or not?
Yeah.
Okay, great. If, if you're willing, that, that would be perfect. Thank you. Okay, so then I think you've got the parking limitations to, the, the 15 is already in there. I think I saw that. Do we need to put this distribution list thing in there? Or can I just trust that the prior is going to do it and roll with that?
I think we should put it in.
So Craig, we can burn it, but you can trust us.
I, I mean, I, I, I get it. So, okay, where, where should we put it? We, let's just, because we put in the Neely, just that there'll be notification of the neighbors. I mean, I'm.
We'll just add it. We'll just add a new condition. And Commissioner Haskell can look at the final language, but I think we're, we're clear on that. Do you know what I mean? In that intent, the distribution list, neighbors will have the option to sign up. Priory will notify the neighbors on that list on a quarterly basis of all of the events scheduled for that quarter.
I think you could just use, I think we had the language already in the Neely CUP.
From Neely, yep.
For that one. So, okay, great. And then the maximum enrollment that just needs to go someplace. And then I think we're good.
Yep. So we've got the maximum enrollment for 35. The ADA is 394. The ADA is going to, we want some way to reflect Anne's distinction that the 394 ADA needs to be the number one factor. But we're, we're going to report on both. Right? That needs to be the, what we want to be the main limiting factor.
Right.
Okay, noise management plan, traffic management plan. We know what you're looking for there. I think we can. We've got it.
Okay, so I think that's everything. So I think with that, we need a single motion basically for the SEQA and for the resolution is that?
The SEQA is part of the resolution, so we just need one motion that would be the SEQA exemption and the CUP.
We're almost there, John. Thank you for your patience. So go ahead, Anne.
I'll make a motion that's that the SEQA condition and the resolution with the four changes I think we made.
I think there's five altogether, but yeah.
Four or five.
There's five, traffic, noise, parking, max enrollment and distribution list. That's Judith will do the final wording. And you seconded it, Nicholas?
I did.
Great. All right. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Laura, would you do the roll call?
Sorry, the boxes moved around when Commissioner Golden came back. Commissioner Haskell.
Hi.
Commissioner Targ.
Hi.
Vice Chair Koff still.
Hi.
Tara Taylor.
Hi. All right. So the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. We'll work out the fine details, but I think you guys have got a great project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much, Commissioner Taylor. Look forward to meeting you in person.
You bet. Thanks, thanks for, for hanging in there and for the, and for the 12 members of the public that are still with us. Thank you as well. Okay, so moving on in the agenda. We have planning commission minutes.
We have commission reports first and staff reports, right?
Yeah, you're right. So, all right. Getting tired. So moving on to, are there any commission reports? Okay, are there any staff reports?
Um, yes, I wanted to give you an update on SB nine. Would you like a very brief update? Or would you like about a three minute update?
Three minutes is important.
Why don't you start on the three minutes and then, yeah.
If it's too much, just stop me.
I, I'm going to time you just like I do everybody else, three minutes.
Okay, here we go, right? On December eighth, the town council approved an urgency ordinance implementing SB nine. It was based on work of the town council subcommittee, the town attorney and myself and our teams in order to put an implementing ordinance in place before the new year, which is very important for this community. There's two major components to the law. Lot splits that would not otherwise be allowed and development of two units on certain properties that would also not otherwise be allowed. When you'd normally just have a single family home plus ADUs. So what got adopted includes standards for lot splits. And then rules for when those lots are developed, including a limit so that there would only be two units each if there was a lot split and development. There would not be ADUs on those properties. Those would go through a ministerial process. And the unit size would be the same as ADUs. So what the council did was built on what the planning commission already worked on very hard for ADUs in terms of the sizes and the carrots and the sticks incentives and disincentives for complying with the setback. So per the council subcommittee, what we did is we took those same ideas and applied them to SB nine units. So it will look very familiar to you, a little bit different format, but the same rules basically when you take a look at it.
So do the SB nine units, are they going to be allowed to be within the setback?
They're allowed to be as close as a four foot setback.
And that's part of SB nine?
Like, yes, it's expressly in SB nine.
Got it. Okay.
More than four feet. So same incentives and disincentives that we created before.
Basically the same things the ADU, the state ADU law had in it as well. Okay.
Yes, very similar.
Also, question is in similar in the sense of now that we have a law, a code in place, does it apply until the state makes a further statement or consider, you know, review of our code?
SB nine does not have the same rule that requires, requires us to submit our ordinance to HCD. So our ADU ordinance has to be submitted, but our SB nine ordinance does not.
Okay, so our rule is good. Excellent.
So our rule is good unless we face some sort of challenge to it. And then if people are proposing SB nine units that are larger than those size limits, the same as ADUs, they would be allowed to apply to ASCC. And they could have those units go up to their AMFA, their adjusted maximum floor area. So there's two different paths. One is ministerial, same size as ADUs. Another path would be discretionary to ASCC. If you don't do a lot split and you want to add an extra unit, the way that I've been thinking about it is that you'd have a main house, an SB nine net, an ADU and a JADU if you combine all the different state laws together. The SB nine unit again would be the same size as 80 years up to your AMFA. But if you're over your AMFA, then the SB nine unit would be limited to 800 square feet. Because that is minimum that we have to permit under the state law. Now you interrupted me on the three minutes, so I can't no longer be held to three minutes, but we're doing.
Yeah, I know. I was going to say, I'm, I'm giving you a little extra time. Your three minutes is already up.
The grounds for denial of these units are very strict. And Cara explained that there's a really high standard. There has to be no possible mitigation. So it's not a very easy grounds for denial. We also created objective standards because there would not be ASCC review of these. And what we did was we took the design guidelines and the common ASCC comments and the things that we would want to regulate and tried to write a checklist of objective standards. And that was adopted by the council by resolution. So that's a little easier to change than if it was by ordinance. So that applies all ministerial SB nine projects. Related to safety consideration. We added a placekeeper in the ordinance related to the safety element. So we're updating the safety element now. If there are future restrictions for safety, such as fire safety or geologic safety that come out of the safety element, then those would apply to SB nine units. We also are keeping our normal geologic map and resolution that you're familiar with. We are keeping for SB nine units, the ADU exception area that the planning commission created. So lots less than an acre, 18 foot wide road, one way in or out, those units, those properties would not be allowed to have an SB nine unit. And we're also keeping the fire safety checklist that you're familiar with. So if the SB nine unit does not comply with the local setbacks, they would have to meet the fire safety checklist. The fire marshal and the fire chief reviewed the SB nine ordinance with us in advance and participated in the meeting and expressed their support for the fire safety elements that were included with the ordinance. So the question is, why now? You're familiar with this. It's kind of similar to the ADU ordinance, but much more extreme. That if we didn't do something now, we would lose a lot of the small amount of local control that we have. So by doing this ordinance now, you're able to keep the fire safety checklist, keep the limits on ADUs with lots where it's keep the size limits on SB nine units and keep discretionary ASCC review for all of our new houses. So it was important to put something on the books right now. So the council adopted it as it was proposed. So if you look at the packet that's on the website, that is what was adopted. So there's no changes to it. And the council direction was to come back and define tune that through the normal planning commission process. So there's not a timeline for that. We don't know how many of these projects there's going to be. But it was important to do something now and then come back and give it a little bit more thought. So very complex. It's not perfect, but it will help protect some of the most important town values. As we're trying to implement this complicated thing and people are interpreting it. So we'd be happy to try to answer questions.
Don't interrupt her.
And that's
three minutes.
That's exactly what we were, we, when we had the joint meeting with the town council, we said that we needed to do, if we had to do something quickly, we had to go right to the town council as an emergency. So perfect.
Thanks for that update, Laura. It's good.
And that's all that I have for you for staff reports.
All right. Now, moving on to the next agenda item, which, well, I guess I should open it up. Were there any public comments on the staff report? Okay, seeing none. We have six members of the public still hanging in with us. I appreciate that. All right. So moving on to the minutes that we have two sets of minutes, November 17th and December 1st. Why don't we start with November 17th? Eight comments, edits, et cetera.
No comments.
I had a comment, but just seconds. Looking back, my notes are always a while ago. Just a sec.
Why don't I start with Judith?
Yeah, great. And then let me get there.
And then you'll catch up.
Red page 107. Two thirds of the way down. Long paragraph near the bottom. There's a random T on the right hand margin. I don't know if you see it. Okay. Red page 111. There's something strange going on with the grammar here. I said, and this is the second paragraph, I said, if there is a family event, then there is no wine event. And if the family event is mutually exclusive. I'm not sure I said that. I think I was asking what happened. So if you can change it to an asking, but then I think there's a break in the next sentence that shouldn't be there. I think the period after event that day probably should be a comma. It seems the next sentence isn't really a sentence. I go to red page 120. Oh, this is just a question. You first refer to Lucy Neely and then it's after that Ms. L. Neely. Is that intentional? Just check it. If that's the way you're doing it, it just seems that you refer to her two different ways. I don't have a strong feeling about it.
I thought that was the mom.
No, Lucy is the daughter. She's the.
I know who Lucy is. I just, when I saw that reference, I just went, oh, that must be.
Yeah. That's kind of why I'm wondering. So if it matters.
Oh, okay. I mean, I think the transcriptionist was trying to figure out how to make it easier, but maybe they made it harder because the mom is Holly Myers.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, whatever you feel is clearest there, Laura. Red page 125. And I don't know if I've gone over to the next set of minutes. So
You have.
Okay, then I, then Anne, why don't you go for yours and then I can.
Oh, okay. It's okay. Mine's back on 108. Red page 108.
On the first paragraph, about halfway down, it says, vice chair cop still mentioned that if the property hadn't accessory dwelling unit and a different family occupies it. Then it starts a new sentence. I think it should not be a new sentence. Maybe it should be comma. Then they may be subject to the provision. That's all.
Greg, are you approving them separately?
Greg, are you approving them separately or together?
There's, there's separate agenda, run the agenda separately. So why don't we just approve them separately? Just to keep it simple. So any other comments on November 17th? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I motion to approve the November 17th minutes.
Okay, I got a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, do we do roll call on minutes?
Public comments.
Oh yeah, we do do public comment. Thank you. Been late. Any public comment on the minutes from November 17th? Okay, seeing none.
Yes, we should do a roll call. Commissioner Golden.
Hi.
Commissioner Haskell.
Hi.
Commissioner Tark.
Hi.
Vice Chair Koffstil.
Hi.
Chair Taylor.
Hi. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So then let's go to the minutes of December 1st. Judith, go ahead.
Yep, just two quick ones. One, page 129, red page. Um, it's midway through. Commissioner Haskell asked historically, what has the student increases been? I might've said that, but can you help me out with the grammar here? What, what have the student increases been? That's minor. And then red page 132. This is again, a third of the way down. I, I think the Commissioner Haskell said there is no doubt that the prior is a valued asset in the community. Okay, I definitely said that. And there is no doubt that the prior is following the same process as other applications. I don't think I said that. I think I said there's no doubt they're a valued asset. But we still need to follow the standard process that other applications follow. So I wasn't really trying to say the priori is doing something. It's just, we're treating them like we treat anybody else.
Yep.
Any other comments? Anne, do you have anything?
Nope, no, that's all.
Nicholas?
None.
John?
No.
Okay, so then I'd entertain a motion to approve the December 1st minutes.
Motion to approve. As amended.
As amended, that's, all right. All right. Are there any comments from the public? All right, seeing none. Is there any further discussion with commissioners? All right, seeing none. Laura, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Golden.
Hi.
Commissioner Haskell.
Hi.
Commissioner Tark.
Hi.
Vice Chair Koffstil.
Hi.
Chair Taylor.
Hi. All right, great. Well, thank you, everybody. And thank you, everybody in the public who's been hanging out with us. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, excellent. All in favor? All right. Well, thanks, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
I, I guess we're not going to have another meeting before the holidays. So happy holidays to you all. See, see you in the new year.
Sounds good.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Good night.
Take care. Bye bye.